Evening to order, folks. Good evening. I would like to call to order the ACSD Board--
We're ordering in progress.
I'm gonna start over. Good evening. I would like to call to order the ACSD Board meeting for December 8th. The current time is 6:34. At this point, just checking to see that we have a quorum. It does look like we do. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 in the room. And we have-- Yes. We definitely have a quorum. Okay, several folks are on Zoom. So at this point, let's do our introductions. And I'm gonna actually start with those on Zoom first. So Jason, could you start?
Jason Jones.
Suzanne.
Suzanne Burke.
And Laura.
Laura Heaton.
And I think I saw Ellen is--
Ellen, yeah.
Yep, hey, Ellen Ellen Lee.
Yes, great, thank you. And in the room, Mary Heather.
Mary Heather Noble.
Steve Cash.
Tricia Allen.
Jess Venable-Nova.
Steve Orzek.
Wendy Baker.
Barb Wilson. And administrators in the room, please.
Sonia Eifan, Director of Equity Inclusion and Restorative Practice.
Nellie Colazo, Assistant Superintendent.
Courtney Kran, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Bruce McIntyre, Director of Facilities.
Matt Correnti, Director of Finance and Operations.
And our two principals.
Tracy Harrington, Principal of Shawram.
Nadia Pak-Kongar, Principal of Formosa.
Thank you. At this time, could I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any changes? Any discussion? Seeing none, seeing no hands on the Zoom. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as warned, please indicate by saying aye.
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 It sounds like everyone-- On our agenda up next is our first public comment period. This is the time that we offer public to provide comments to the board. Just as a reminder, comments are limited to three minutes per person. And it's a time for folks to bring forth things to the board, but it's not a two-way conversation. And please, in doing comments, make sure that it's not regarding personnel, students, or legal matters. That really shouldn't be held in a public forum. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment? Okay, if you could state your name.
Abigail Murphy. I am just still Shoreham resident and stuck on your decision from last week, two weeks ago. And so I've written down what I feel like-- And it might take more than three minutes. And I'd like to know that ahead. Because Wendy, you get more than three minutes. And Barb, you get more than three minutes. So if it takes me four, that's what it does.
It's, I'm sorry, it's three minutes for public comments. And you can provide them to us if you can't make it through it. And we'll start the timer now?
I would like to know what the appeal process is for this decision. I believe that this decision was made regarding Bridgeport and Shoreham. Consolidation was grossly unfair ultimately and impertinent. Unfair because Shoreham constituents were not represented appropriately during your discussion. Imbalanced burden on these children and families in the community of Shoreham. I'm trying to sum this up for you guys. And then I'll send it in an email. Through all this discussion with parents and the board, individual board members, rarely responded to questions. Wendy, who claimed multiple times that she was not trying to sway the board one way or another, responded for the board, to the board, the majority of the time with an argument in favor of consolidation. The representative of Shoreham, Barb Wilson, did not even try to represent the constituents of her community, nor did she even vote. Past consolidation changes advocated for the push by past administrations who made bigger, made big promises to reduce tax burdens and improve student performance failed to deliver on these promises. None of these promises were realized. In fact, taxes are up and performance is down. Where's the data that supports single grades classrooms as the gold standard for elementary instruction? Within our own district, we have successful models of multi-age classrooms. Instruction, majority of our lives, we are instructed in multi-grade classrooms as a preschooler, high schooler, in college. You have offered no firm data that straight grades will be the key to student success. There is data that proves stability, feelings of safety and belonging in the school environment do. It takes significant amount of time to develop that culture within a class of students, within a school building, and within staff. The adoption that you are creating for Shoreham students is most likely going to set them back. The decision you made also makes Shoreham a second-class community. The impact that having no school in our town will have far-reaching effects on the social, cultural, financial well-being of Shoreham. The decision you made does not make sense for the children who are likely to go through yet another upheaval in education in the next few years when Act 73 is finally pushed through Vermont legislation. The time of this decision is ultimately the wrong. The decision you made is imprudent because it spends plenty of money for only a short-time solution to a problem you are manufacturing. So how do I begin the appeal process? Does this go to the state?
So, as I said, isn't a time for two-way dialogue.
If anybody wants to respond via email to me, you all have it.
Yeah, and we can, yeah, reach out to you. Thank you so much. Is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? Okay. Seeing none. And I'm going to delete my little timer here. Let's then move on to approve the minutes of 11:24. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion, corrections? Seeing none, seeing no hands on Zoom. All those in favor of approving the minutes of 11:24, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the ACSD bills. I'm gonna turn it over to Jason, who's on Zoom.
Suzanne and I reviewed the bills this morning. There were three warrants. The General Fund warrant dated December 5th for $908,087.07. Metroplum Fund warrant dated December 5th for $3,957. And a payroll warrant dated November 25th for $1,64,969.43. A couple of questions that were answered, and there were no outstanding questions. So I move that we approve the bills as written.
One second. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the ACSD bills as reported by Jason, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the bills have been approved. This evening, we do not have our student representatives. I did receive an email from one that they couldn't make it. Now that I haven't heard from them. She should come in. We might circle back. Next up is reported as superintendent. And I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Baker.
Okay, we begin with personnel appointments and resignations. Just a couple for your approvals, so those are submitted as written.
Can I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we appoint Brody Gordon, 7th grade girls' basketball coach, Step 3 effective, December 1st, 25. Point Sylvia Jameson, wrestling coach, Step 5 effective, December 1st, 25. And accept the resignation of Seeler Gunther, grounds technician, 1.018 effective, December 1st, 25.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions?
I noticed the basketball coach was first.
Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the appointments and resignations as warned, as listed in the warning, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
As per usual.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Laura.
Okay, so the bulk of the superintendent's report tonight is taking a look at the first draft of the FY '27 budget. Before we start, I just want to acknowledge the hard work that Matt has done to get to this place. You might remember that last year, at this time, there was a baby being born. And Matt was developing an equity-based budgeting model, you know, together with me and others. And while he was, you know, managing this new baby and trying to make sure that all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. And so this year, I think, what is nice to watch him accomplish is making all the spreadsheet cells work with all the theory on the front end. And so, you know, if what we have for you feels like a solid package for your consideration, and that feels different, probably, Matt, for you this year than it past year as you were working your way through a couple of these projects.
Moving in the right--
Yeah, so thanks, thanks right now for your work.
Mary Heather, could you pass on the ability to share--
Yes, of course. So he's got a presentation he's gonna walk you through. As we do that, there are some tricky programmatic changes because this budget reflects the decisions that you made at the November 24th meeting. So we are moving forward without Ripton operations and in considering Shoreham and Bridgeport K-5 together and the Shoreham Elementary School serving as an additional expanded preschool opportunity. And so that changes some things in the blocks. So Matt and I will tag team to try to present that to you efficiently in order to, you know, give you concrete information and the ability to move forward easily. There are some more of Ds for those who-- I can filter a couple in the audience before we go. Go ahead, Matt.
And, you know, for anyone who might be looking at the board, formerly known as Board Pack materials attached to the meeting, I will let you know that those are out of date. So we'll be updating the Board Pack materials with the current info that's either passed out here tonight or that's in the presentation. So just in case you notice any inconsistencies, those are part of the program here. And we'll make sure that the board materials are brought up to date in short order. So, yeah, as I've been trying to figure out which environment is easier to plan a budget in, newborn or one-year-old, it's, you know, it's been good work this year in sort of following through on the model that we created in FY '26 to segment out the budget into these seven building blocks that represent types of expenses, types of investment, regardless of the traditional cost centers that they might come from, and to help understand the nature of the district's obligations, requirements, and strategies around spending money to educate kids. So tonight, we're looking at the blocks first and foremost. And we're gonna walk through each one of them in the same format, which will look something like, you know, a cover slide here to introduce the block and to talk a little bit about the contents. And then something like this that has a grid that lists three, first three major pieces of information. New money from drivers, areas of reduction, areas of addition. And then the total block projection is sort of the net of those first three pieces, along with a summary of the net difference and the percentage change from year to year. If there are acronyms that stand out as a head-scratcher, let us know. We think that we've gone through and broken most of those open so that there shouldn't be too many code words in here. And for each set, we'll sort of share the mic and have Dr. Baker talk about the program. And I will back-clean up and discuss the numbers that you see in front of you. So just to back up here for Block 1, we're looking at our infrastructure and district operations. The subcomponents of Block 1 are the district office budget, which also contains the school board, things like insurance and whatnot. We also have our transportation contracts, our food service program. That's just the bottom-line transfer from food service from the General Fund. We have technology, we have facilities, and we have the district's debt service. So all of those happen to be standalone cost centers in the traditional model. They are all bundled together in Block 1 because they form the sort of backbone infrastructure of the district. And as we move into '27, we are looking at, first and foremost, the application of drivers. As you can see here, and might remember from the driver's presentation, those are normally salary increases, inflationary forces on non-personnel items like contract services and supplies and materials. We have a merciful 7.4 health insurance premium increase this year. And for the first time in several years, a small increase to the dental insurance premium rate. So all of those things are programmed onto the appropriate lines to form the drivers. We also have our additions and subtractions. And for that, I'll pass it over.
So if you're moving across, and the reason that this format is linear is to provide transparency from what we asked you for in FY '26 to the things that we need to do in order to be able to do the same thing. It just costs a little bit more based on inflationary measures. And then what we are reducing because of different conditions in the district and then what we're adding. And all of those are your choices as well, you know. So it's, we're giving you kind of the first draft of that thinking. So here, you see in the budget reductions, the beginning of the restructuring of FTE that would have otherwise been in Ripton had we been operating that school. So there is .5 custodian and .5 food service positions. Those are vacant. Those employees have been reassigned in other places in the district. So we're just removing those vacancies and the funds that go along with that. And the Ripton facility expense of simply doing the plowing and whatnot and the upkeep of the building with the assumption that the voters will either go ahead and give the district permission to offer the building back to the town, or we would be selling the building. Either way, we would not be carrying those costs. We don't anticipate carrying those costs forward. And then in the ads, you see, we mentioned that we have a driver that we have brought on this year in a pilot program to see if we can manage some of the extraordinary, literally, transportation costs. And that pilot is something that is working. Half of that driver's responsibilities are in infrastructure, and you'll see the other half in a later block. MCTV, so as you know, MCTV provides an incredible service to the district and to many other institutions, you know, within the greater Middlebury area. And I worked with Cur to identify an amount that would be appropriate for our services. And that's about $15,000 a year. We are actually the largest client of MCTV. And so there are many other, as I understand it, organizations throughout Middlebury that are also contributing, you know, by kind of thinking about an hourly approach to what's happening. And so we're proud to include that here. And then there is an additional $100,000 of facilities funds to get us on our way in terms of making some of the improvements that were mentioned in the presentation regarding the changes both at Bridgeport Central School and at Shoreham Elementary School.
I apologize, that didn't make it into this slide. But, yeah, that last $100,000 is the Bridgeport and Shoreham facility.
And then Steve.
We'll just say I'm kind of confused because the slides we have don't align with this, nor does it seem like this kind of align. So, like, I've--
Which, which numbers are our current--
What should we be looking at?
--draft numbers? Cause his hand up, right?
The one on your hand. The one, the slide should say 165, right?
Don't see 165.
For addition?
It says 65,000.
165,000.
Okay, that 100 was a, was a late addition.
Yeah, right here. But then, yeah, our rainbow sheet was 4.8% versus 3.-- So just some of the numbers aren't quite the same, but--
4.8% for the ed spending per LTW ADM? Or not for the--
The last block in this slide percent difference from block budget.
It says 4.8%, as opposed to what you have on your presentation.
Which is 3.3%.
And then we have 1.3 on the slides. We're looking at--
Well, Kirby said that the--
Yeah, we sort of remember that.
Right, so we know it.
This might be wrong, too.
So we're just wanting to reconcile what's being presented here with--
3.3.
The sheet that was handed out. Yeah.
This is why having the programmatic details is the win.
Yeah, yeah. And it's all good, just knowing which is the current draft.
What you're seeing on the screen is the current draft.
Okay, so, perfect.
All right, so-- Knowing that we have more to go, I don't wanna, not to question, but should we stop after each block? Or should we--
Any questions on Block 1? What we've talked about so far-- Any questions on Block 1, what we've talked about so far relative to what you would expect?
I think this makes its way to the public, and people can see that. I do worry a little bit handing this out to members of the public, and it'd be good if this was all straight from now.
Yeah, all these slides will get put into the board materials after the meeting. The whole correct version here, we had a 11th hour Friday deadline and needed to get the draft in there. So, okay, so moving forward, we're going to go to Block 2, which is our tuition expenses. We have two cost centers in here, the Career Center tuition and UPK tuition. So for UPK, first, we've got our payments that we make to third-party providers on behalf of resident students that we earn weight from in our LTW ADM. For the Career Center, we pay based on the six semester average enrollment times the annual tuition rate. So both of those things are the sort of formulas that govern our annual tuition payments. In UPK, we also have 1/3 of the coordinator salary and benefits package for our UPK coordinator that we share with the other two Northern Addison County districts, and so that's another piece of the puzzle here. For drivers, you know, no major additions or reductions, all of the change is sort of summarized in drivers here. We are projecting that that average six semester enrollment is going to go up about 6% and that the tuition rate at the Career Center is going to go up close to 10% when we create this projection. So that drives the majority of the new money from drivers, and then we also have a small fraction of that which comes from the UPK increase, but the tuition rate increase is largely balanced out by the fact that our enrollment declined a little bit in UPK programs this year.
So Matt, this slide, these are really just, the numbers are what they are, right? Because it's, we don't have control over the Career Center tuition, we don't have control over the UPK payments. Like, this is all really just, it is what it is.
One caveat to that might be if you open up a pre-K program in town like Shoreham and create a school-based program and pull some demand away from UPK, that can have an impact on the sort of cost dynamics there, so.
Also, just a note, the Career Center will be here at the board meeting on the 22nd to let you know what their budget is shaping up to be and get some time for questions around that.
Okay.
Block 3 is our largest block and where we hold all of our required personnel and, you know, are always quick to point out that requirements are not just, you know, state statute or federal law or anything like that. These are, you know, a combination of requirements, federal, state, board policy, best practice, equity, you know, there are a lot of things that create the requirements, strategic plan, you know, things like that. And so with that said, we have our required personnel grid for this year after applying those same drivers. And remember, this is a personnel-only cost of blocks, so there's no inflation or non-personnel items in this chunk. So after applying the salary and health and dental, we've got some additions and reductions to talk about.
So the ones that you'll see here relate mostly to not operating Ripton and not carrying personnel forward, that is not directly related to the students that have moved mostly to Salisbury. So we, and this compares budget to budget. So in our FY26 budget, we had two additional teachers, teacher FTEs that were in Ripton that are not being carried forward in the FY27 budget. We have a total of .8, that is arts library movement, which is PE in many circles, and Spanish. Folks, that's a kind of a .2, .3, we'll get to those distributions in the later on, but that's what that looks like. There is a halftime principal that was a position that was in Ripton that is not being carried forward, and a 1.0, I'm an assistant that was serving Ripton Elementary School that is also not being carried forward. We, out of this block, have a transfer of a .5 FTE of a library which relates to the blending of Shoreham and Bridgeport K-5 communities. You remember that there, in Bridgeport right now, there's a .5 librarian, and in Shoreham there's a .5 librarian. For Cornwall and Salisbury, who would be approximately the same size, the mandated programming, if you will, would be done by a .5 FTE. The Shoreham and Bridgeport together would have a 1.0 FTE next year as per the staffing program. So .5 of that is in transfer to Block 7 because it is related to improving students' reading. It's part of the strategy to improving their reading. So this is coming out of the required block and into a block that relates to just, you know, equity of opportunity as a measure of transparency. And then Mary Hogan, looks like they, as I reported to you today, have a sustained smaller kindergarten class for the second year in a row, and so there is a one, a reduction of one classroom teacher from Mary Hogan. So they, in the FY26 budget, have 21 classroom teachers for their K through 5 programming, and that second year sustained small classrooms in the kindergarten level, it looks like we would take another teacher out. So they're, we're budgeting currently for 20 teachers at Mary Hogan. So those are the reductions. The additions you'll see right now, that 1.0 at Mary Hogan is there as an addition. The instructional specialist model is one that is having a very positive impact across the district, and there is some thought that if we hold a position there that is in the budget that could be used as a universal design for learning specialist, that if enrollment changes, we are covered there, and if it doesn't change, we actually have an opportunity to pilot something that may be very helpful, you know, as we move forward. So that's why that FTE is held there in the additions. There is a .2 FTE of Ripton Elementary School reduction in Spanish that is, we think more, it's important to hold at Mary Hogan in order for students in grades 2 through 5 to receive Spanish instruction in a manner that allows the professionals to have better planning opportunities than they currently have now. And you'll see the addition of the three pre-K FTEs, one classroom teacher, which is for Shoreham Elementary School, and then in the new expanded classroom, and two paraeducators as per the presentation that we gave on the staffing in that program. So those are the reductions and the additions as they're presented here. Any questions about that? Looks like Ellen has one.
Oh, Ellen? Yes.
Yeah, this is sort of a general question, and just knowing that we're going to have future budget conversations and versions of this presentation that come to us, I would just say that I think the table, while helpful to look to read, you know, left to right, it's not feeling terribly clear to me where all the money is coming from. I mean, I hear you saying it verbally, Matt and Wendy, but it's hard to follow on the slide. So as this slide or these slides evolve, I think there should be more detail in where the money is moving and how, and in particular where the money is coming from, meaning where the new money from drivers is coming from. I'm assuming that that means that all the new money from drivers relates to the asterisks at the bottom around salary increases, inflation, health insurance increase, if that's not correct, that's the full question that I have. But I just think that there's actually a lot of information missing from these tables that would be really helpful, even just the line items. I'm thinking about Block 2, knowing which of the increases are coming from UPK versus the hand for Career Center would be helpful, because otherwise I think there's a lot of information missing here that I or anyone from the public might want to see, especially as we're going to get into future blocks. So that's just sort of a general note for how this information is shared in the future, because I'm having a hard time following, even with all the verbal explanations that you all are offering.
Do you want to speak to the drivers, Matt, at all?
No, I mean, I'm hearing what you're saying, and I think that that's, you know, it's certainly something that's, it's tricky, right? In a 4,000 line item budget, it's hard to, you know, walk through them one by one and to, but it's also difficult to, in a single cell, tell the whole story of, you know, a $23 million investment. So I think that, you know, you can see where we've used, you know, sort of placeholders and rough salary estimates to give sort of an impression of what the reduction and additions would be. We don't know who those people are, and so the fine tuning and detail on the pluses and minuses, comings and goings will sharpen up over time as we gain clarity there. As far as drivers go, yeah, I mean, there's, there is a tremendous amount of information behind each one of those cells that relates to, yeah, the different bargaining units and different, you know, rates of salary that each one has. We have people who move from one job to another and one, you know, location to another and need to have their money move with them, and so there's a lot of, you know, things like that. We have people that are split to multiple locations, and locations change or the fractional splits change, or people who come in and out of grants and, you know, have their share of general fund obligation versus grant obligation shift on a year-to-year basis or, you know, mid-year basis. So there's a lot of different, a lot of different details there, and I, you know, I think knowing how to best summarize that for the board would be, you know, very, very useful.
Although, Matt, let me just, and I can be a little more specific. I think the slide before and the intro slides that you're using on, like, Block 3, that tells us everything that's in Block 3, because I hear you, it's not like it's just as simple as an addition and a subtraction anywhere, but you're kind of, like, these slides are setting us up to understand different categories of spending that are falling in all the blocks. And if there's even any way to say, you know, for example, I don't think this applies here, but Vermont law, you know, statutory requirements have changed, therefore there's an increase of some, a dollar amount or percentage, or if it's truly just all around comparable staffing ratios or our efforts to meet the strategic plan, I think it's more of the disconnect as I'm, as an audience and a reader, trying to understand what within this block is driving increases or decreases. So I hear you on the fine line item conundrum, and I'm not asking for that level of detail. I know that's impossible, but I do think in some of these, and again, I go back to the second block because that one just had two categories, and so I was just looking at it thinking, wow, which of these is the driver? So, and it's mostly just trying to keep straight what in all of the components you all are taking into account is being driven by us, right? Tricia, you made that comment earlier, kind of what are we obligated to meet and what do we have some control over? And I think there might be some detail here that we can build in.
One last piece is that as we get to the end and start to see, you know, more of a traditional cost center summary, that might help provide that secondary data point to show, okay, so within Block 2, we saw, you know, what the net was, the summary at the end will show, you know, the individual UPK and PAHCC cost centers on their own, so you can understand them individually, too. So there's that towards the end, and we can maybe think about how to do some more integration of that throughout the budget presentation, so you're not sort of like blind to the part that your brain needs to kind of connect the dots.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there, for each block, there was one additional slide that kind of summarized those drive, you know, those highlights that we've talked through on here, keep the structure, but add maybe one page to each block that articulated and summarized those key points that were being made. So even if we had to kind of go back and forth, it might, between the two, the one page and that total table, it might be useful.
It's easy to do, and that's why we do two presentations, right?
Yeah. And we'll see at the end, maybe there's some stuff there that could be pulled up on that page as well.
Also, Ellen, just to your point, the things that are moving in the budget, you know, last year, there were a number of different pieces, right, that were moving in order to build a budget that was designed to implement the strategic plan and send us in that direction. In this budget, much of that is static. So the only changes you would see in that are the contractually obligated raises and the inflationary pieces, things of that nature. If there are reductions that relate to some of the changes that we're experiencing as a district, those are things I'm calling out, and you can, you can see them in the budget reduction column. If there are additions that are, that are other than the things that I just mentioned that Matt's talked about relative to inflationary drivers or contracted personnel driver or health insurance, that kind of thing, then you'll, you will hear me say them out loud in the budget additions, and they're marked there. Those are the only moving parts in this budget, which makes it different from last year's budget, and I, and I wonder if that helps a little bit.
It also frames this as a first draft model so that you can begin by understanding on a broad strokes basis the important deltas in each block, so that those are brought up first and foremost, and then, you know, the fine tuning kind of comes in behind there.
Steve, did you have a question?
Well, a question and a couple of observations. I think this is great for first blush. I mean, we're not, we're not down to the line items yet, and this does give us a high level of view, so I'm not, I guess I'm not as nervous as about the numbers that I'm seeing here. Couple of things that would help me, and they're more on the summary end. We went through a lot, and there was, there was quite a bit of work done last year about equity, making sure the class sizes were fairly well the same. And I think enrollment also would help in this conversation to know what our anticipated enrollment is, and are we maintaining that equity? Because I heard, you know, I first heard the Middlebury going away, and then I heard the two Ripton positions going away, and so I'm trying to keep in my head, at the end of the day, what's the balance here? How many teachers are working with how many students in each school? And I think that's more important to me than the dollars, that we're trying to maintain that equity in instruction.
Yes, and we are. Class sizes are projected to continue at approximately 15 at the K through 5 level throughout the district. Those are not changing, and you have that information that I've given you through the fall, and so that, there's no, there's, as much as is shifting in our district, there's a lot that is not changing in our district, you know? And that's a great point to raise, Steve. So we'll make sure that those are, those points are clear, you know, as, as we develop summary pages in conversion, too, as we go.
Yeah, and, you know, we're working with Ashley on solidifying all of her pre-K counts. Those are still sort of up in the air, and that, that's, you know, question number one when it comes to enrollment, which is, you know, what's the, what's coming in for kindergarten? As we go to Block 4, we're bringing all of the non-personnel pieces that accompany Block 3 into the equation here. So that's both tangible things like books and periodicals and supplies, but also our contracts with third-party providers who are not associated with special education or student services, because that puts them into Block 5.
And these are, go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to say, we've got a, you know, a $28,000, $29,000 sort of base on, from the drivers. It's, again, just adjustments to the price of our goods and services going up year to year. This isn't just take every budget line and throw a 4% multiplier on it and, you know, click and drag down. It's a little bit more fine-tuned than that, where we look at our FY25 performance on a line-by-line basis, and we're... a line-by-line basis, and work with principals, and they work with their department heads on calibrating lines, so that if, you know, you bought Brunson burners one year, you might, you know, be eligible to free up funds that helps to buy, you know, French books in the French department, and that kind of cost-sharing or transitional approach to non-personnel items. So there's a little bit of movement there. But as far as reductions and additions, what we wanted to sort of segment out are things that do feel like they are sort of wholesale being reduced or being added for the first time. And that's where we see the supply lines for Ripton. And this is a little bit of a misnomer, because that $8,000 are the lines that didn't move already to Salisbury by enrollment with the kids. So we calibrate things like books and periodicals and general supplies for classroom and library budget by enrollment. When enrollment moves, the money can move, too. So as part of the FY '27 process, all of those lines begin by coming back into a district-wide pool. We figure out what the enrollment projection is going to be. We figure out a per-people price tag, and then we prorate the whole pot evenly to each school. In the case of books and periodicals and general supplies, we also work with the principals on determining their ratio of where in the school the money needs to go. So some principals, for instance, like a heavier allocation to the library versus the classroom, because of the way that the program runs, and we've maintained those ratios one way or the other. And so all that kind of is captured in the first part here. We also have been working through new middle school and high school departmental requests. Again, that's sort of like micro-budgeting that departmental leaders work on with the principals and bring forth. And, you know, we kind of work on that on an item-by-item or case-by-case basis to say, all right, well, as long as the delta from one year to the next is reasonable, it's usually a pretty easy thing to fit in. But sometimes you need a new car, and we have to have a conversation about, are we buying a new car this year? So that's, you know, one of the things that's in there is a potential addition, a new driver's ed vehicle for the high school, to help, you know, continue to run the driver's ed program there. I realize I did all the talking on that one.
That's okay. You know that one pretty well. Any questions on Block 4 for now?
A car would be a one-time expense.
Yes, and that is the largest increase in terms of an addition, you know, in that block.
What is the lifespan of a driver's ed car?
That's a good question.
Eight years.
Eight years? Somewhere between five and 10?
I've been here 26 years.
Yeah, I think it depends. I think, you know, one of the things, I met with the driver's ed teacher to cut your mouth on that exact question, and I think, you know, while there's a good wear and tear argument to be made for the current driver's ed vehicle, it is still street legal and could probably live through another year. But I think programmatically speaking, investing in a new car is not just, you know, fresh parts, but updated technology. And I think that between the vehicle that we have now and what we would potentially be looking at, there's the ability to bring something onboard that would be a better teaching tool for kids to learn on than what we currently are able to do. So I think that there's a programmatic side to the ask, just as well as a shiny new car side.
Yeah.
Sorry, any other?
Block 5. So in Block 5, you have any service that is tied to an IEP, or a 504 plan, or related to our multilingual services. And there are both, there's both personnel and non-personnel in this block. You might remember, this is a block we paid a lot of attention to last year, to sort of, as we were bringing the ACP programs in-house, right, and making that tremendous change. And so there is less change in this block this year than last year. You'll see that there is a reduction of three special educator positions. One, at Mums, there are two special educator positions that are still vacant. One of them relates to Thundering Brook, which is the alternative program there. We've had them advertised now for quite some time. The second is one that is part of the general team at Mums. That vacancy has been persistent now, you know, for a number of years. And so, as Nellie will say in a minute, we're just sunsetting that position and taking a different strategy to be able to get that work done. When we knew that students from Ripton were going to be moving to Salisbury, we added a special educator position to that school in hopes that that position could serve either to support students' academic needs that were related to an IEP, or to perform IEP services and intervention services as needed, depending upon the outcomes of where students were as they came together. So that position, the person in that position transferred to a different position in the district, and that position has remained unfilled despite a number of attempts to hire it six ways to Sunday. And so what we have done in this budget is sunsetted that position, and you'll see me with a different strategy in an ad for that. The other position is a position that is a third special educator right now that is supporting students in Shoreham. That was a, it is a position that was carried forward through the Ripton budget and is sunsetting. The person in that position is retiring at the end of the year, and so that is not a position that we're carrying forward in the budget. I'm not sure we could hire for it anyway, and it's not something that we're continuing on. Lastly, we are reducing one administrator on assignment, which you might remember as Gina Fucci, who was here as a bridge for a year. She was one of the administrators in the ACP programs, and so we brought her over to help to ensure that these programs can get in place and whatnot for a year. And you approved her retirement, you know, a request to retire at the early year. So we're not needing to carry that position forward. That was a one-year bridge. So those are the reductions in this block. The additions are two administrative assistant positions, and I'll let Nellie talk about those in more detail, since she's here, and how those are going. In addition to that, you'll see the other half of our driver. And you will see an increase in $1.3 million in out-of-district placements in associated transportation. Now, the good news about that, if I can, you know, take footsteps into the money side of things, is that there, much of that is reimbursed, you know, through extraordinary reimbursement funds that we are receiving. So it will inflate our spending in this context. There are offsetting revenues that come for much of that. However, you know, around the state, this is a challenge, and I just want to take a moment and acknowledge that. Nellie, do you want to just talk a little bit about the admin assistants and the vision for them, and how they're, I know we have one hired, right, but how they're supporting?
So the admin assistants, the purpose of them is to support the case managers and support the buildings. So for example, we currently have one, Tiffany, which you hired a few months ago, and we've had her trained. Erin, our coordinator, Robinson, who's amazing also, trained her for about two weeks, and now Tiffany is managing all of the meetings that are happening at Mums. So whenever there's an IEP meeting or a 504 meeting, she attends. She takes all the notes. Where historically, what used to happen is, the case manager was facilitating the meeting, she was also, or he was also, taking notes during the meeting, and also trying to keep the dialogue moving and going, and then trying to catch up to whatever was said and slow this down. And in some situations, our building administrators would do that. Or, so it just made it very challenging, and when you have a caseload over 20, it's quite hard to be doing all the things. So our admin assist, Tiffany is amazing, and she was trained quite well. What she does is she attends all those meetings, she takes all the notes during the meetings, she makes sure that those meeting notes are shared with the case manager. The case manager is still the person that's bridging that company between the school district and the parents. So Tiffany doesn't do that. What she does is she makes sure that all the paperwork is put together, everything is aligned, and then the case manager just kind of takes that packet and provides it to the parent, and the conversations are happening between the case manager and the parent. So we didn't take away that very important relationship, what we did is we added clerical support, in order to ensure that the reports are on time now, no prior written notices are missing, no consents are missing, no evals are missing, right? Everything is put in place. And so that's what we've done. The goal was, and has always been for me, after a lot of communication, was that we would hire two. And this year would be a training process, because the caseload was higher for the middle school and the high school. So one would be middle school and one would be high school. And then next year, we're going to push one down to elementary. And then we would keep the one that was highest trained into secondary level. So then we would have a team of elementary and secondary clerical that would support the case managers, would take all the notes, and make sure all those pieces were set, which would take that clerical piece away from the administrative, from the case managers and the building principals. So that is the goal behind that.
And they're also, Tiffany's also putting materials in EdDoc as well, and so...
Yes, she uploads everything, like, everything that's clerical, she's the person that takes care of, and also she supports. So these admin assists also support Erin as the coordinator when it comes to our state report. So right now, we are doing child count. So Erin and Tiffany would make sure that all those reports are put in place, and then I take a look at them before we submit them. So it takes, it's a filtering piece, right? So we're not making errors, we're not making mistakes. Where I think, when I first came in, that was one of those areas that we were always talking about, is how do we make sure that we're following and not missing out on any information, and parents aren't receiving that kind of stuff? Now they are.
Any questions about that? Steve?
Across the district, you're two assistants here, right?
That's the hope.
Yeah, that's the hope. We only have one right now.
Okay, how many IEPs are there across the district?
We have 365.
Yeah, that's 100, that's...
It's a lot.
It's a lot, it's 180.
I just did the numbers today, 22%.
Yeah, 180 for each person?
Yeah.
That sounds like it's a lot.
It is, but also remember that I also am an LEA. And Erin, as the coordinator, she supports me, because that's a different level of meetings.
And not all the activity around all of those IEPs happens at the same time, you know?
Sure.
So it's definitely, and it's an evolving model. I think the hopeful part is that, you know, our case managers are appreciating this, it's putting their expertise with the students where they feel most valuable, and it's making a big difference in the way they are able to carry their work. So it is, you know, we're working through it now with two positions down. Hopefully, we will be able to hire the other vacancy at Mums particularly, that is, that we are still missing, you know, so that we are leaving on the books, you know? But it feels like it's moving us in the right direction.
So it would be the next, you know, the following budget that would have that third position potentially? Or is it in here?
In this budget, there are two admin assistants.
There's two, and then the third one would come...
Well, are you counting Erin as, so Erin is a program coordinator?
Okay.
Yeah, that is, that works in the district. And so her position is the beginning of a different model that replaced the two special ed directors that reported up to the assistant superintendent in our previous model. So Erin is coordinating programs, and then the two admin assists are assistant case managers. That's the idea with their paperwork and whatnot, in a way that is effective for them. So we have one on the ground right now that's working. If we could hire another one, you know, when we get the right person, we'll bring another one onboard and see, continue to see if that's helping. But it's definitely a more efficient strategy if it is working, continues to work well.
Yeah. And just kind of a follow-up on Steve, your concern was that it's still too...
It's a lot.
It's still, and that may be...
Well, I mean, I know special educators feel like, I mean, they are always juggling way too many balls, and this, even in a meeting, you know? I mean, they're like running around with their hair on fire, trying to do all these jobs that you're talking about. The fact that we can take at least one piece of that off of their plate sounds, you know, sounds smart. And if we're getting people in there who are able to do clerical stuff, like, that's kind of their training, it makes sense. And my question, I guess, was, and why not more? Because it seems like the need is definitely there.
Right, that's what I was getting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so who was, so Jess, was she next, then Steve, and then...
Yeah, I just had two questions.
And we have Jason as well.
One was about the, this admin assistant for specialized services. Is it a different, like, credentials? It's obviously maybe a slightly different skill set, but I just think we're having, like, having trouble filling these positions. Is it different applicant pools that would be applying to these?
Yeah, our applicants would be clerical, someone that can type really fast, someone that is used to being able to manage a calendar, right? It's literally truly assistant. And the reality is, we just haven't had a lot of people apply. We were pretty lucky with Tiffany.
Sweet. And my other question was, you'll come back to me.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, I have a question and a thought. My first is, I think it's 1.3 million on my side and on there. Can anyone tell me the population of students, or number of students, that are impacted by that 1.3 million? Like, roundabout numbers, like, how many?
We don't discuss that in open session, because we want to ensure that there's no identifiable information shared.
Totally. The reason I bring it up is because I think there was mention earlier about equity in terms of classroom size. And I think it's important for us all as a board to also keep in mind that you can look at equity differently in thinking about meeting different students' needs. And that may be appropriate. I know it's a big number. I don't know how many students would be impacted by that. But I think we should all keep that in mind, that you can look at equity in one way, same number of kids in a classroom with a teacher, and you can also look at it as are students getting what they need. And I hope we all keep that in mind as we go through this process.
That's one of the points that, you know, is made in the redistricting task force report, around one of the ways that the collaborative service agencies could be of use to the field, is in providing additional opportunities that meet this need in a more cost-effective manner. Because part of the reason that these costs are so high is that there are very few providers of transportation, very few providers, you know, of services that will meet the needs that we're seeing. Out of district, there are very few. So therefore, the costs are tremendously high. And the thought is that if we could do something regionally to increase those opportunities, that would change. And that would directly impact our bottom line, if we could be more efficient as a region related to that. So that suggestion is in that report, if you want to read more about that.
Would a 30-second overview of extraordinary reimbursement help anybody? I don't know if that's...
Is it federal money, or is it state money?
So it's state. After the first $68,000 of costs, the state pays on a formula basis the majority of any additional costs incurred by the student. The costs have to be eligible, they have to be recorded, and are reimbursed on a monthly basis. But the reason for doing that is that the costs become extraordinary, and all of the extraordinary revenue that we bring in gets backed out of the ed funding conversation, because that's really a function of individualized high need, and not LTWADM, as it were, right? And so that's one of those general fund revenues that you'll see later on, that gets backed out off the top before we calculate our ed spending. The reason for showing a little bit more of that revenue in part of our spending plan is because, like we said, we're no longer running a three-district consortium ACP program that would have been where we would have sort of parked some of those resources in an attempt to do the, create the thing ourselves. And now, I think that there's a little... And now I think that there's a little bit more capacity in the budget for the specialized outplacement.
Which also includes transportation.
As well as the subsequent reimbursement.
Right, so we have that reimbursement there.
Yeah, what was the number above? What amount?
Sixty-eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, and did any, did you have a question before I jumped to Jason?
I guess one of the things I'm wondering is, so clearly, you know, this is a strategy to try to free up some time and space for special educators to actually focus on special education instruction rather than the clerical stuff. But I'm wondering about the need and the number of special educators that we had, you know, in the budget was obviously kind of determined by the number of students regarding services. So has that changed and, you know, what are we? You know, it's great to offload some of the clerical stuff so that the professionals present can focus on students, but I'm still wondering about that gap of being able to provide special education service to students even with this adjustment. Can you give us a sense of, you know, what the need still is?
I can, I can bridge the last year to this year part, which would be hard for Nellie to do. And then you may have some thoughts as well. You know, I think that what this has accomplished is it's allowed case managers to focus more on the direct service minutes. So what I'm hearing across the district is that there are fewer missing minutes now than there were last year. And last year, we also had vacancies, you know, that related to special educators. In a conversation with the Department of Ed that Nellie and I had earlier this fall, you know, I think Cassie mentioned to us that, you know, there were, she might even have said 2,500 licensed special educators in the state and only 1,500 or 1,000 of them are working under their license. So it's, this is a statewide challenge. And so what we're trying to do is ensure that people who we need, who have licenses, who need to do licensed work are most with students and doing the work that they're required to do by state and federal law and that others are, we're changing, we're pivoting to other models to be able to get the others done. It feels like our IEPs are being served across the district more completely now than they were last year. That said, you know.
Yeah, and they are. So we, as a team, the special education teachers and the admin in this district are amazing. And I think that they've worked through these processes before I walked in. So me coming in and bringing in another piece has just allowed that freedom of time to allow for services to be provided. But some of the models haven't changed, right? Like we still have interventionists providing some of the minutes because per the regulations, you would have an interventionist that's a reading or a math expert to provide that specialized service. So those services are being provided effectively and efficiently this year because we have the ability to free up some of that clerical time. And now our teachers are not feeling like they have to work during vacations and they don't have to work during their dying of and they're not staying later hours because they're doing that clerical piece too. And so they are able to more focus on the services that need to be provided.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, and I totally understand and appreciate that. I guess the way I'm looking at it is, in some ways, it's sort of like you've changed. I guess I just want to make sure that the number of students who still require services are still getting services.
Oh, yes.
And I'm sure it's better than last year, but I'm just wondering if there's still a gap because, you know, there's just not enough providers to provide that special education instruction. You know, and it comes to mind just because, like I'm wondering, you mentioned that 1.0 special educator who was in Shoreham is not being carried over. And I guess I'm just wondering, I'm seeing these positions being sunsetted because nobody's filling them, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the students who require services have changed or gone away. Do you know what I'm saying? So I guess I just want some assurance that those students and the need is still being met. Even, and I understand and appreciate the pivots, but if there is, you know, still a need that's not being met, then, you know, how do we, I don't know, go to the state and say, you know, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly, but I'm just wondering if there is a gap still.
So, so that, I mean, we are doing the pivots. Another example of a pivot that you hired a general educator at the high school earlier this year, right? Because they had a special educator vacancy. So that general educator is providing minutes, you know, related to the IEPs at, you know, at the supervision of that special educator, but you hired somebody with a literacy expertise, and so that's, that's working well. I think the good thing is that we are, we're working to pivot ahead of the challenge as opposed to being behind the challenge, which is, I think, where we found ourselves last year. And so that said, there are, there are new referrals and there are new needs that come, and we are, we're meeting those the best we can. And sometimes we have to hire somebody else to help with that, just as we would in any other year. That hasn't changed. But I think as far as, as far as our professional staff, you know, we are, we are in a much better position because of the type of pivots that we've done than in the past. The other thing is that we, in our SLPs, you know, we still have vacant SLP positions, right? So we are using other services and, you know, I mean, we're, we are, you know, I think technically speaking, if we were, if we were to come to a file review for us, we would pass. But, you know, we're working hard at trying to make sure that that all continues to happen. And nothing about that has changed. It's just that, you know, we at least feel like we're on par with it at the moment, you know, which is, it's a moving target.
Jason?
I'm curious if the admin assistant restructuring will have any, or you think it will have any impact on hiring and retention?
Yes, I have my own opinions about that, but I'll defer to Nellie.
So in my experience and in my training, we've always had clerical assistants when it comes to special education and IEP meetings, which is why it was so easy for me to just bring up this model because I've lived in it for nineteen years. So yes, I would say that when a special education teacher has a caseload of anything between fifteen to twenty and they don't have to sit and write written notices or email them out, it does provide them the opportunity to be able to focus on the things that are important to their position. And that doesn't change, right, progress monitoring? That doesn't change all those other pieces that are required as a teacher. We all do them, but it does help with retention because it's easier to come to work and not have extra stuff put in place.
And I think it's a reminder that, you know, the way, the place that this model is in place right now is at Mums in lieu of the, our ability to hire two special educators right now. And, and, you know, at this time last year, I can tell you that the special educators, those two positions were, those, one of them was vacant and the work that the other was doing was out of, you know, district in an ACP program. So really, you have the same circumstance with one vacancy and the staff was in dire need of an intervention. And so now, I think, we've reached a much greater level of stability. And that, I think, is appreciated and people are able to focus on their work. It doesn't mean that there isn't a lot to do, for sure.
Thank you.
Slide us to block six here, which is where we have all of our student opportunities. As an itemized list, this is where you'll find athletics for Mums in the high school as well as co-curricular activities and clubs. It's where we hold our elementary school field trip lines. And then generally speaking, any investment in experiences beyond what is required. So Key Waden is sort of a signature investment in that regard. When we talk about drivers to the student opportunities lines, that's everything from increases to salary and benefits costs for activities directors and coach salaries to non-personnel lines associated with transportation and materials and supplies for athletics and activities. We also, in block six, hold the line that funds our IB fees because while a universal curriculum is required, the IB is the opportunity that we have decided to provide for the students. Because of a change in the fee structure, we were able to negotiate a substantial, almost fifty percent drop in our IB fees from around eighty-five to around fifty-three hundred, or fifty-three thousand dollars a year. And so that is reflected here in the reductions. When it comes to, you see duplicates reduced. There are some times where we have coaches who are employees who get a stipend through payroll and then we have coaches that are hired as temporary employees who don't otherwise work for the district. And there was some duplication in that arena that got straightened out. And then, you know, some changes to benefits to kind of bring all of the block six personnel things into alignment. So after making those reductions, we also worked, working with Mary Hogan and the other elementary school principals as well, developed carve-out for $20,000 towards new experiential field trips. This roughly splits, splits ten to Mary Hogan and the rest amongst the other elementary schools.
Hey Barb, it's hard to hear Matt because of just like background noise and conversation going on.
Okay, thank you, Jason. The door's open. We're gonna shut the door.
Basketball game out in the hall. I will say that, you know, student opportunities are one of the last cost centers that we do construction on, and there's still a little bit of scaffolding up around this area as we fine-tune those last field trips and make sure that, you know, another aspect of this that I forgot to mention off the bat was the additional FTE that we budget in block six for band and chorus and supplemental art.
At the elementary.
At the elementary level. And so those investments have rolled over but are also subject to the year-to-year modifications that we have made to AMS and this sort of shared staff. So I'm not sure if you or Courtney wants to talk about those at all or if we just kind of. Okay, so any questions on six before we?
Very sorry. Can you clarify that? Is the art music and, like, are those considered block six or is that required for curricular?
So general music is required, band and chorus are not.
Okay.
At the, at the elementary school level. So we, at the, at the, at the secondary level, we think about that a little bit differently, particularly because, you know, you can earn graduation credit at the high school level, so. But they are considered opportunities at the elementary school level. And in art, there is a, you know, each class has art. However, we also carry some extra FTE in art that is, that's considered an opportunity. So, you know, there's, there's, there's extra FTE in art that is going to be in Bridgeport, you know, to help as part of that staffing plan. And then there's also some extra that was just carried last year to be able to just enrich other curricular opportunities, you know, in the district, and those remain.
Our last block is seven, and that's where we have our equity investments. So I won't jump the gun and do all the programmatic talking here, but we have our two, two major job classes would be interventionists and instructional specialists as well as individual investments in student success.
Which includes summer programming, new graduation supports. You remember the flexible pathways, pieces, things of that nature. So you, you will see that in the budget reduction category are only two things. And that is after the, our attempts to hire instructional specialists, we have a .5 literacy instructional specialist position that we were not able to fill at Mums. They're okay running with what they have, you know, and making improvements with what they have. And so we're proposing to take that money out of the budget for next year. And then we had a .5 math instructional specialist. Were we to run programming, K-5 programming at Ripton Elementary School? And so that, that position is also coming off. The budget additions in this block relate to an MUHS intervention position. That is a literacy intervention position, and it is related to Act 139. So Act 139 indicates that the high school needs to also attend to students who are screened at the at-risk reading level in a particular way. And that is going to take an added position to do that. So that is, that is why that's in there. Also, I mentioned to you that we were sunsetting the attempt at adding a special educator to Salisbury based on what the student needs have actually now shown themselves to be now that the students are together and we're on the ground and learning and on our way. We've added a .5 intervention to Salisbury. So they currently have a .5 interventionist and they would have a 1.0 interventionist. That is actually already, that extra FTE is already being filled by Susan Oldley, who is, who is coming in like a champ and providing some extra assistance. So, you know, we're wanting to plan to have a second full interventionist next year, you know, as FTE, as we move into that year. And then you see the .5 library FTE that I mentioned earlier that is designed for Bridgeport that will help to ensure that the literacy supports that we envision for those students are in place with that extra FTE. And that's an example of how, you know, we're able to take the staffing in two buildings and put it together in one and actually accomplish more, you know, than we were able to do, you know, with them, with them in the separate buildings. The other staff that you remember from the planning presentation relative to Bridgeport and Shoreham, like they'll have the second interventionist, right? They'll have the staffing from both schools. That doesn't show up here as an add if it already exists and we would be moving it. So I just want to make sure you knew we didn't forget anything. Everything that's in that staffing plan is in our dollar amounts that we're working with now. Questions about that?
Made it to the bottom here and our expense totals from the block. So this starts with just a sum of where we were block to block in FY '26. We summarize the FTEs that are being reduced and added over the course of the seven blocks that we just presented, as well as the corresponding dollars. This summary gives us a year-to-year difference of about two and a half million dollars or five percent total expense. One thing that's worth noting as we're in this block architecture is that the blocks contain all of our funds that are used to spend money. So everything from the ed fund, the census block grant, extraordinary reimbursement, all of our federal grants, Medicaid, all of the revenues that come in are part of the blocks. There's one thing that's not part of the blocks, and that is the fund balance transfer that gets kept separate because it's. That gets kept separate because it's never included in Ed Spending, and it usually just passes through our budget as an expense and a revenue. And so it's not included for the blocks to keep it easier to understand their year-to-year change. However, everything else that's an expense is in here. And so when we see 52.9, that does kind of represent all of the dollars that would go towards, you know, paying for kid education in FY27.
I have a question. Like, the total addition. Obviously, that includes that 1.3 million, right? And, which is a very substantial part of that. Do we recall how much we were spending last year or this year for those specialized services?
Out of district placements.
Out of district placements.
Well, you know, I think one of the things that's been...
Just for apples to apples.
The case in previous years is that the budget wouldn't be calibrated correctly to what we were gonna spend. It would be spent as a contingency because we didn't, heading into the year, think we were gonna spend it.
No, right.
We might have thought, oh, this might be an enrollment in one of the programs that we're running internally, instead of forecasting that we are gonna spend this money. So then it would come in and it would be a contingency expense. And luckily, it would be balanced out by the contingency revenue that comes in. And so it would be sort of a wash. This year, we're bringing both of those items of information in as part of the plan so that it's a little bit more of a roadmap to what we're gonna expect. Again, knowing that it's a volatile area and that contingency happens much more often in this area than in pretty much any other area. Both in terms of the magnitude and the frequency.
Yeah, and that was kind of why I pointed that out. It's, you know, that 2.5 or whatever, I can't quite read that. 1.3 million of that is that out of district placement, which is like more than half of it. So it's important to kind of think about that as we're looking at this in terms of the increase.
The other thing that I'll say is just, and sorry, Mary Heather, that when we had our initial marking orders for the financial feasibility goal, the reason that we didn't choose to tie it to total expense was exactly what you just said.
Right.
That we are here representing some very high, very volatile expenses that are coming in. And without looking at a revenue correction for those, it's not a good benchmark for what our year-to-year picture is. And so instead of using the total expense growth as our yardstick, we wanted to use Ed Spending. And so as we'll see on the next slide or two, Ed Spending is really where we try to hold to that 3% financial feasibility goal and use that as our guardrail.
And Ed Spending, for better or worse, represents what many of us used to know as the part that we would be asking our local community to fund. You know, so back when it was simpler, that would actually relate to the tax rate that everybody in the local community would see.
And I'm sorry, Mary Heather, did you have your hand up?
Well, I actually was, I mean, Matt pretty much summarized it. I just was going to ask, and it sounds like it's coming up, whether the Ed Spending sticks to that 3%, three and a half percent, whatever threshold we have set, so.
Before we get there, this table does break out our 10 traditional cost centers and has one important financial item to discuss. So you can see here, we have General Ed, Student Services, which include all student services, those that are affiliated with Special Ed IEPs and some that aren't. UPK and PAHCC. For some reason, I always forget the A. So if anyone from the Career Center is watching, I will make sure I put that in there. Suzanne? And we have our Transportation Facilities, Tech and IT, Board and Admin Administration. So that's the District Office Budget. PD and Curriculum, the District's Debt Service. We have a bottom-line food service, general fund obligation of $300,000. That's not meant to cover anything other than the gap between what we spend in food service and what we earn in food service reimbursements. And that benchmark seems like it fit our needs last year. And so we've just kind of rolled it over flat, not anticipating anything other than that there. And then the last item is where we would traditionally put our fund balance. And this year, it says fund balance, deficit, capital transfer. And so the explanation there, and, you know, in both the '25 and '26 budgets, those amounts were amounts that we had in our warned articles designated to capital reserves after Board approval. Because of the timing of that $1.297 million transfer from the FY26 spending plan and the final fund balance from FY25, so last year based on our audit, there will be a deficit position created. And that's largely because the effects of evening out or zeroing out all of the ACP accounts and handling the costs associated with starting up a new program at 208 were unbudgeted expenses that consumed enough of the basis that when we made that voter-approved transaction to capital reserves, created a deficit position. And the magnitude of that is that 1.098 number in FY27's requested. We're working with our auditor right now on figuring out the best strategy for how we present this during the warned articles. And the strategy as of right now is to draw down the Ed Reserves in an amount that would zero that negative balance out. Essentially borrowing money from ourselves to create a zero basis position for FY26 to operate in. FY26, if all goes according to plan, will operate at a positive fund balance. And that positive fund balance would then be, by your approval and the voter's approval, transferred back to Ed Reserves in order to restore that basis. This is sort of a financial somersault, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's kind of fits within the level of tolerance for a budget our size to kind of need to be able to make this kind of maneuver. As a benchmark, our audit team recommended, you know, an $11 million reserve position as prudent, which seems like a lot of money, and it's three months of money. So, you know, if we think of all of those bills that we pay in the beginning of the meeting, and, you know, $900,000 this, a million that, you know, that's, we spend $3.5 million a month at this clip. So while this is a relatively large number in terms of its magnitude, this is a pretty straightforward, you know, one-in-one-out kind of deal. The question that I'll be working on with the audit team is whether or not because the Ed Reserves are simply restricted revenue, which means we don't need Board or voter approval to draw on them, if it makes sense to bring this forward as any kind of a warned article, or if, because we don't need to have it be a warned article, we can clean up the language and make it a more straightforward budget summary without having to bring everybody through the intricacies of it, which I'm happy to do one way or the other. So that's a little bit of a work in progress. That's in progress. Any questions on that?
Other questions? Steve?
I think I followed what you said.
I'll say it again.
By having those extraordinary reimbursement services, that's what you referred to them as, shown in the budget, that helps us avoid this type of situation.
Yes, absolutely.
Potentially, correct?
Yes, it does.
Did, and do you disagree perhaps?
Well, I think it's apples and oranges in a way. I mean, I think that, you know, what we saw in '25 with the collaborative ACP programs is an anomaly. It was, you know, an expensive program that was designed to prevent even greater expense. And, you know, I think that at the end of the day, you know, we were in a position where we needed to close up those accounts and, you know, zero them out. And the general fund was what we needed to use to do that. So I think if you were to say, imagine a different year where we didn't have any of that and we didn't have to worry about an ACP program and we decided not to put any kind of extraordinary reimbursement in our budget, we would still have the benefit of the extraordinary reimbursements coming in, and we could sort of have it be a bottom-line thing, which is the contingency strategy that we would employ if a special education program changed during the year and somebody needed to be moved to a least restrictive environment outside of the district. So like, those kind of things always happen, even if they're not part of the spending plan. But the strategy in planning for it this way is to, on both the revenue and an expense side, just really show the full magnitude so that we can have a transparent and complete appreciation for that investment zone and just really think of it in its entirety when it comes to making the, any kind of decisions that touch on that amount of money.
Yeah, and I think that clarity, transparency, and avoiding the financial somersaults makes sense. And it may take some explaining, but we also may have to do some explaining depending on the warning that we have to write for that particular item.
Yeah, and I agree with everything Matt's saying. I think it's just that, it's just that careful monitoring. And in the past, the ACP, the whole programming and the finances that went with it was kind of thought of as like off the general fund books.
Yes.
And so now, and this is what I was saying yes to, we're all in, you know. So these are, that's one of the things that the block models, you know, really help is to show all the dollars that we intend to spend so that we are keeping track of all that in one place without, you know, the dispersment that happens, you know, once we start talking about what funds what and how all that works. And so at least at one time during our budget presentation, we can say, okay, these are all the dollars that we intend to spend. You know, they're all in there, and that feels reasonable, you know, at the time that we know it.
Yeah. And because they were collaborative programs, they couldn't be on our general fund books, right? They had to be separate accounts segmented out so that all three districts could participate in them with an air gap between each district's general fund and the collaborative fund. And that was a third, a third, a third caution.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mary Heather, did you have a question?
Well, I'm cooking up a question. I'm not really sure if I'm going to articulate this well. But I'm thinking about when we switch to a formula funding model and how special education is gonna be funded in the future. I'm just wondering if that changes at all how we'll be able to... I don't think I have a question, actually. I think I'm working it out. I hope I didn't do that wrong.
You might have a worry, which I share.
I have a worry, I guess.
Yes, yes.
I'll just articulate that.
Yes, I mean, you know, right now, our, and maybe this is where you're going. Right now, what you're seeing as we're talking about Block Five and these particular pieces are, is the result of people who are serving our students with specialized needs going through the legally mandated process of determining what are those needs and how do we fill those? And then reporting that information, and the state provides, you know, funds accordingly based on those needs. What a foundation formula is contemplating currently is providing money out to districts based on weights that go along with disabilities. And then districts are supposed to provide services within those dollars. That's in direct conflict with federal law, which prevents financial decisions from being, from influencing discussions about a student's disability and the appropriate services in order to meet free and appropriate public education, which is what is federally provided as a right to every student in public school. So perhaps that's your question.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm failing to articulate is that transition.
Yep.
And, I mean, right now, it seems we spend what kids need and we get reimbursed for, you know, above a certain amount. And I'm just wondering what that will look like in the future. And then how we do our budget planning around that. It seems very worrisome and tenuous.
Yep.
I guess to be determined.
Go ahead, Matt.
We have on this slide all of our revenues that aren't Ed Spending. So all the things that don't get factored into the tax rate or pass along to the taxpayer to raise. We have two categories. One's general fund, one is other funds. Okay, so in the general fund, offsetting revenues fit into these four buckets. In the first, we have tuition, state and local grants. Tuition is tuition revenue that we bring in from selling tuition to school choice schools, like our White River Valley friends in Hancock, Greenville, Rochester. State and local grants are things like extraordinary reimbursement. We get a transportation grant from the state. We get a merger grant. There are a handful of smaller ones that come in every year. One that is bigger and is therefore broken out on its own line is the Special Education Census Block Grant under Act 173. If anyone's been, you know, keeping track of this at home, you've remembered that we've stepped up our grant amount every year since FY24, so '24, '25, '26. They're all step-up years for us as we move towards something called the Uniform Base Amount, which is finally going into effect in FY27. The Uniform Base Amount takes a uniform base amount across all of the LTW-ADM students in the state and just multiplies that by your, I think, LTADM, no W in that. So your long-term, two-year average enrollment times the uniform base amount is your grant amount for special ed. And in this case, our projection, which I think is pretty well locked up at this point, is that we're gonna see an increase of over $415,000 in that this year. The 17%, by the way, in the first line is where you would see some of that uptick in extraordinary reimbursement revenue. We also had a high budget for tuition that's based on enrollment projections scheduled to go down. So there's a little bit of going down and a little bit of going up, smashed together into that 628. But that's the net effect. You can see here on the last two lines, the fund balance transfer, which we didn't want to call a reserve fund transfer because it's not the same thing. It's not, it's not revenue that we're receiving from a fund balance, per se. So we have no fund balance transfer this year. Instead, we are having that reserve fund transfer to come in as a revenue to then match the expense that we talked about earlier on the expense side of things. All of those get tallied up into that $9.4 million line, and that gets taken right off the top of our total expense in order to help us move towards what our Ed Spending is. The other thing that gets taken off the top is the other fund revenue. So these are the things that are federal and state grants and always cancel each other out on the expense and revenue side of things. So they're symmetrical in that way. The greatest hits in other funds are IDEA B and IDEA B pre-K on the special ed side of things. The CFP grants on the non-special ed side of things, which are Title I, Title II-A, and Title IV. We also have Medicaid and EPSDT, which is sometimes called MAC. We also have Medicaid and EPSDT, which is sometimes called MAC, those cover some of the medical services reimbursements. And then we have a grab bag of small grants, which we kind of always hold as around $65,000 of revenue that we're going to get in for a specific purpose, and it's going to go out for that purpose that it got brought in for. So that's just sort of a placeholder for the miscellaneous ones. All of those are our other funds. Again, they're symmetrical, what we bring in in revenue is what we spend in expense. We do have some capacity within our IDEA-B, Medicaid, and CFP grants to turn up our investment knob a little bit, and in doing so, displace funds that would otherwise be in the general fund. So when you see a 21% increase in revenue in the other funds, that's because we are investing into our allocations a little bit more aggressively this year in order to, again, have some control over how much growth happens in the general fund and keep the financial feasibility target on track. Now the moment you've all been waiting. So, once we take all of our other fund revenues and expenses out of the equation, we take our general fund expenses and subtract those general fund revenues, what we're left with is ed spending. And you can see there, as a reminder, this is that benchmark number that we wanted to constrain within our 3% growth goal. We're currently at 2.6, 2.62. Again, there are some scaffolded areas of the budget that we talked about, and there's some fine tuning in the budget, there's that first slide, whatever the heck was going on there that we talked about. And so I think that, you know, over the course of the day, we have established confidence in a range of 2.8, 2.6 to 2.8. I think, you know, under 3 feels pretty confident at this point. This isn't a finished number, and, you know, we will continue to sharpen that and communicate how it gets sharpened over the course of the next couple of weeks. In order to convert, as we move closer to the tax rate, in order to convert ed spending to tax rate, we next have to figure out what the per pupil ed spend is. So we need to divide our ed spending by our long-term weighted average daily membership, which we have had three versions of so far in the last two weeks from the state. And we can see here that there's a 2.1% decline in our LTW-ADM this year. When we unpack that number, it's two things. It's long-term enrollment, so, you know, kind of the enrollment picture from last year and this year combined, and it's weight, and a function of the demographic makeup of the district in areas such as grade level, poverty, at or below the federal poverty line, FR, sorry, that's FR, English language learners, students who attend small schools, and students who attend sparse schools. All of those are the weights, which we've been over with you in previous presentations. But the most remarkable part of LTW-ADM this year is that we are seeing a 6% to 8% decline in our free and reduced lunch category, which measures the federal poverty level. We are also hearing that everybody in the state is seeing a similar decline, which is a, which takes a single anomaly and turns it into a bigger anomaly, that we are investigating and trying to figure out what's going on in the mechanism of how that number is calculated. This is a number that was traditionally calculated using free and reduced lunch forms and the verification of those forms, which involve calling people and verifying income, verifying residency, verifying signatures, all those things. And it switched to direct certification a couple of years ago. That said, anybody who through various pipelines, Medicaid, Dr. Dinosaur, DCF, Three Squares, all those things reach up qualifies, it'll automatically put you on a list. That list becomes the direct certification database for the district. It was a much cleaner and more efficient system, and it kind of rendered obsolete the need to, for the district to go out and do the forms. Okay, so the forms sort of went away, which makes it hard to say, you know, okay, so from one year to the next, what changed? Nothing seems like it changed to us in terms of that demographic number. And the fact that everyone in the state is asking the same question is raising some eyebrows. So we're highlighting that because we don't know if it's going to change. If it does, and we take our LTW-ADM closer to zero as a year-to-year number, what happens is that ed spend per pupil number, instead of looking like twice the ed spending margin, looks more like one times the ed spending margin. So, you know, we would go in that 2.6, 2.8 kind of range for our ed spending. And, okay, so that's ed spending per pupil. And honestly, I think that we're going to do the tax rate the next time because we've talked for long enough, but I can get into it if we need to tonight.
I think suffice to say that, you know, it's right around 3.5%, you know, as a district tax rate at the moment, you know, which is, you know, that's, that's a reasonable guesstimate based on where we are. So, of course, we have CLAs to apply and all kinds of other things, but, you know, but I, as I sent a communication out to our community this morning, like, that's basically where we are, you know? So that as the state conversation unfolds, as it does, our community has information that's consistent with the bottom line that you're looking at tonight, so that they understand where we are and are able to ask questions in an advocacy role.
Mary Heather. I'm curious just about the issue they pointed out with the number of students living in poverty and how that number has changed kind of across the state. I'm wondering, like, what is, what are superintendents doing, you know, what's the VSA say about this? Like, is there kind of an overall advocacy happening where the state is being kind of asked to be accountable for this? Are they changing how the numbers are calculated, or are they just saying, "Christmas miracle"? Like, I mean, it seems very fishy to me.
It's concerning, and the president of VSA, Amy Minor, who's a superintendent in Colchester, and the president of VASBO, Elizabeth Jennings, who is now in South Burlington, have written a joint message to Secretary Saunders outlining, you know, their observations and their concerns with some questions that relate specifically to how this was calculated, given that this is apparently a statewide change. And, I mean, we're certainly not feeling a difference of students that are having challenging economic circumstances in our district, and it's not making sense across the board. So they've sent that communication and will await that response. And, you know, the majority of the change, I think what's, it's important for the public to know, is that the majority of the change in our average daily membership calculation relate to that change. We have not lost students, per se, in a manner that creates a problem with our denominator. It is related to that calculation change. And so that's one of the things that we will be awaiting information about.
Steve?
And then Steve.
One, I'll be curious to just understand how transportation fits in this. I heard earlier a comment about extraordinary transportation costs, and I don't see a future where transportation costs go down, especially if we have less schools and more kids going to certain schools and likely more mileage. So I suspect that'll be a reality, is that cost will continue to go up there. So if they're extraordinary this year, I wonder what that future looks like. And then the other one is I just do want to recognize that this budget, what Matt deftly weighed out, represents that there will be two towns that won't be educating their K-5 students. And just a recognition that even in spite of those efforts, and I know those decisions were not made solely based on the economics of things, even with those types of sacrifices, those of numbers that we're looking at. And I just think it's a recognition of not educating K-5 students in certain environments, how much of an impact does it have, or does it not have on budget? And like I said, I don't know if we made those decisions based solely on economics.
No, and in the, in the, in the change with Shoreham to Bridport, you know, in fact, that is, adds a little bit of cost to give them the facility pieces and the expanded pre-K that, you know, that you have. So, so in future years, you may, you know, see savings there once outcomes come up, you know, in that respect, because you have some, some different services there in order to attend to the academic needs that, you know, we've, we've been focused on. I think the, I mean, that's one of the reasons we meticulously went through this. You know, I'm reporting 0.5 of this and 0.3 of that, and as hard as that is to follow, it was really important to us to be very transparent with the public that we are taking every single FTE that was in a place that is not operating in the same manner and accounting for it in our numbers, so that we're not, there's nothing glossed over, there's nothing that used to be over here and then was slid this way and nobody knew about it, you know? And I think, you know, the taxpayers here obviously have been very generous and supportive over years, and that kind of transparency is what we've worked to provide among these pretty big district changes.
Yeah, and I look forward to this conversation getting further fleshed out, and it may in time, depending how things shake out, you know, help to either prove the narrative of costs of small schools or districts. And there, you know, will be some reality figured out at the end to understand that situation better, for what it is or is not.
Yeah, I mean, not running Ripton is saving us almost 1% essentially. You know, that's, that is information that we know, you know, it is here, and that is true. Yep, it's not more, not less. Steve?
Yeah, but it is here. I mean, not running Ripton School is saving the district money, and it shows up in this budget. So you can say that it costs more, that special transportation costs are there, but that's not transporting Ripton Schools to Salisbury, from my understanding, what it was. So I'm seeing real savings are being realized, and that I'm kind of stealing the thunder from the next page, that over two years, it may add additionally. Now, last year, Ripton was budgeted for $1.2 million, not $827,000. So I, I know we're going to have a discussion about that later, but savings are there. And we have heard time and again about how it's not going to save us money, and now we're seeing that it does. Not huge, but it's saving money. The second point was, last year, when we had the Pontica miracle of the long-term weighted average went up and we all got money, and everybody was like, oh, this is good, we're not going to ask why, but, you know, this is the opposite end of that. My memory is long enough to remember that we got extra money last year because they recalculated this and recalculated it again, and we got a bonus out of it, and this is pulling a little bit of it back. And now everybody is saying, oh, wait a minute, how'd you get those numbers now? So I have been through the cycle too many times to be surprised by numbers that come from the state.
I think the main difference is...
They are unpredictable, they are hard to get, and they're not timely, so...
I think last year was a software change, and so we were a year delayed in that software change, and that's why, so we knew, we knew why the change was in place. This year, the shift is not, we can't seem to make sense of that, and I think that's what's causing the concern. You know, it, there are districts who are having changes in their long-term weighted daily average that are because they've lost students, and they know they've lost students, and that, that thing makes sense. I think that this, this particular challenge that is impacting us is one that we yet to have an understanding of, and that's what's causing the concern.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. All right, we appreciate your feedback, and we'll bring another round to you on the 22nd that has, that takes your feedback into account and pulls it forward again. There might be some moving parts with different long-term ADM numbers and all of that that come together, but, but we will, we'll bring you those moving parts as well and keep you updated if there are large changes that happen in the meantime.
Friendlier data tables.
Yes, yep. We appreciate your patience as we share with you the way we are trying to keep track of the ins and the outs transparently, you know, so that we're all together in it.
I think having it on one page is a good thing. I think just having some supplemental information behind it is really what's missing. So then it's all documented and it's there.
And that's an easy lift, now that we know where all the dollars are and what they are and all of that, so...
Yeah, but it is, you know, once you kind of understand that extra detail, having it on one page when you come back to it is kind of a good thing, in my mind.
Okay?
Okay. So that's, the budget is done, right?
Yes, it's done, if that's okay with you.
Yep.
So the Act 173 update, you know, I put in our communication, and I think the thing I would draw your attention to is just that there's a, was a presentation made to the legislature from the Joint Fiscal Office, which is a nonpartisan office in Montpelier, and, and they actually did a really nice job, for those of you that appreciate, just kind of a, okay, this is where we are with Act 73. They were very specific as to the December 1 letter being a potential average increase that could happen across the state, and that half of that related to an assumption that the surplus dollars generated in FY '25 that were returned to taxpayers in FY '26 were re-raised as part of FY '27. That was approximately related to 6% of that 12%, and the other was related to 2/3 of districts providing estimates as to what their budgets may or may not be in October. And so really, this is a potential consensus calculation that then every year gets refined as this work begins to take place, and leading up to budgets that are approved by boards and then approved by taxpayers. And, you know, and those metrics move along the way. So she, the person who does the presentation, does a really nice job of doing a nonpartisan review of Act 73, and that was given to all the legislators as a, as a review of the session. So I provided it to you in case it was something that would be of interest to you for grounding. Otherwise, and you have a copy of the redistricting task force's final report. So this is, if you have no other questions, I don't have any other updates for you about that at this minute.
Okay, so next up, I think we have the tuition letter. Yes.
It's on the letterhead.
It is, it's on the letterhead, it is, it is Middlebury's tuition. This is just a recommendation, essentially that the board allow 15 students to attend MUHS under the choice provision that would likely result in six openings for the next year. Each year, you need to, you know, understand, and I don't know if you have, have you approved it every year?
We think so.
I believe so, yeah. So then I would suggest to you that you approve the recommendation presented to you by Dr. Steele in the memo that she's written to you, provided in your packet.
Would someone give the emotion?
I have a question.
Sure.
I guess, one, I would just, it'd be helpful to understand any sort of transportation with tuition students. I know it seems like there's some students that are tuitioned into the district. I know it seems like there's some students that are tuitioned into the district that aren't transported, but then I don't know if there's others. So, it'd be helpful to understand that. And then, two, just being on the facilities committee and hearing some of the capacity at the high school, knowing that's not necessarily staffing capacity, seeing a budget conversation where it looks like tuition makes sense. But does it make sense to see if this number could be higher? And I say that not knowing the operational side, I'm just saying that based on the slides I've seen.
Yeah, so, so this is related to, actually, statute that was designed to be able to allow students to, to, to attend neighboring high schools and for reasonable reasons and reasonable ways. So, you know, if I'm not mistaken, I think the statute is a 10%, not more than 10% of the population or a number as approved by the board, something of that nature.
I'm not sure exactly about the statute, but we, there's reciprocity, so we don't get any money for these students.
Right.
Which is.
So, they, so each high school, you know, can, can opt into this program. And it, it enables, you know, sharing, essentially, student sharing for reasons that work well for students and well for, for families. And so, so we have a certain number of slots, you know, and, and that, that slot number is capped, you know? And so, all of the, all of the area principals work together with applications that come along and kind of determine that work together, so that, so that works. So, that, that's what this represents, which is a little bit different from come one, come all and, and we'll bring in, you know, a certain number of dollars per student.
Right.
Yep.
It's really frustrating because in tuition, they call everything school's choice, but it means a different thing in each context.
Yes.
School choice in this context is reciprocal school choice. School choice in a district where your grade band isn't offered by the district is also school choice, where you get a voucher to go somewhere else, the money moves with you. And then, I feel like there's one other instance we might call school choice, but anyhow, yeah.
I can't figure out the financial somersaults with the school choice and top of the school choice, I just don't get it.
Yeah.
But there is a bus.
So, I'm going to go ahead.
We do not provide transportation, right? We don't run any buses, we're not providing transportation.
For our, for our school choice White River students, for Hancock, Grahamville, Rochester.
But in this program right here.
For this reciprocal school choice, there is no transportation associated.
Yes, 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 yep, yes, yep, okay.
So, I'd like to move that we accept the number and the dollar amount recommended in the letter provided in the packet.
Okay, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the recommendation made by our Middlebury Union High School principal for the slots that will be available, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any objections? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. And then?
That concludes the superintendent's remarks.
Yes. Okay, you can take a brief paper off. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Wendy. Next is a real short report of the chair. I included in the meeting materials a proposed timeline for the superintendent's final review. And it's, you know, included there and I'll just quickly go over it. We spent some time at our December 1 executive committee meeting. As you know, this is something that really, that we need to have done before the end of February, right? And so, at our last committee meeting, it's like we decided we needed to really get a timeline together on this because time goes so quickly and we have an issue. One of the things that is different this year is that we're recommending that we gather feedback from district employees. And the committee has identified that we'd like to create a simple form that can be used for that purpose, so that would go into the feedback process. And if, in fact, you have thoughts on collecting employee feedback, please send us, the executive committee, an email with your thoughts, okay? So, we don't need to do that this evening, but just put it on your radar because we will be working on that over the next several meetings. The next is the board, just as a reminder, this isn't a change. The board will be filling out the detailed evaluation form that we created last year when we created the superintendent evaluation process. I put a link in here. So, for those that have not gone through the process, I highly recommend you take a look at this document that's included in the link because it defines, you know, what those questions are ahead of time. We have put that in a Google form last year and we'll be reusing that Google form. But this will familiarize you with the evaluation process. So, I strongly recommend taking a look at that. Then, next is just the timeline. What we've identified is the creation and finalization of the employee feedback form would happen by January 26. Dr. Baker would submit her self-evaluation by the 27th. And then, we would be sending links to the survey forms on the 28th. And this would be both to board members as well as to the employees so we can start the feedback process, gathering process. The deadline for the survey feedback will be the 11th. And then, the executive committee will meet with Dr. Baker on the 16th. And then, most important for tonight is the board will hold a formal review in executive session. And we have a choice of either the 23rd or the 24th. The 24th is our annual meeting, right? So, we would have to hold in advance of that in a space that's private, you know, like here, not in the bandroom. Or, you know, as I've been thinking about it, I almost think we should do the 23rd, the Monday date, just to keep those two things separate, which is our typical day we would do a board meeting. But we would just focus really on that, at that particular meeting, as opposed to add a lot of other additional items as well. So, does folks have thoughts and preferences about that being either the 23rd or the 24th? Would anyone object if I just said the 23rd, that we just go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I think, yeah, I was thinking about it and it's like, no, I think we really need to do it on the 23rd. Okay, that's all I have. So, next up is our committee reports. And we do have the facilities committee, the capital improvement planning for Cornwell and Salisbury. So, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and Jason to, it's already queued up, so here we go.
I want to take the time to officially recognize Nadia and Tracy, who are here just representing their buildings, in case you have, you know, those sort of dedicated questions and appreciate their time sitting through the budget conversation.
Yes, thank you.
Let's go ahead. Want to start with Cornwell?
I think that that's the plan, Jason, right?
Yes, please.
Okay.
What's your, so just a quick level set. This is the final presentation in the capital improvement planning process tonight. You'll see, we'll see last two schools, Cornwell and Salisbury. And it will be very familiar. I think we'll start out with Bruce, perhaps, and talk about the Cornwell building plan.
Sure. So, the building was built in 1955 with a major addition in 1987. That was the last time we did a major project there. And so, the current building size is 13,500 square feet. This year, we have 83 students, K through five there. The current capacity is 121 students. And the most recent work we've done there is we, actually, for code compliance, we had to update the main electrical panel. We did that a couple of years ago. So, that gives us, it's still, even with the panel update, we're still in considered poor condition.
Let's see. I'm going to skip over this because this is just really a review that, that matches all of the other process slides from our small Process B schools. And there's more detail on it here with regards to this timeline details. Again, Cornwell and Salisbury were the last part of the Process B engagements. And they kicked off towards the end of the summer and are, as Jason said, wrapping up now. As far as the Cornwell building summary goes, I'm happy to talk to you about it. And what we found in studying both the building and the program laid out by, by Nadia and her team is that the, the building doesn't adequately meet the programmatic needs of its staff and students in the following ways. The front office and administration area is remote from the entry, so no line of sight, and therefore represents a security concern. The multipurpose room is inadequately sized and resources for its use as a everything room, cafeteria, instructional space for PE, for art, and for music. It also must be traversed as a main hallway or main connector between the two sides of the building, so there's cross-traffic in addition to all of the other uses. There's a lack of adequate space for administration, health services, staff room, and the conference room. Additionally, the areas that we do currently have for those functions lacks proper ventilation in the, you know, the block wall building. And so, there's a sort of a unventilated middle vibe going on in those areas. There's a lack of private meeting spaces and breakout spaces for small group instruction. Services may be provided in hallways or office spaces just in order to, to find a place to, to do service position. We have, I think, heard anecdotally of, you know, the car office, maybe?
I attended a meeting in the janitorial closet.
Lot of creativity.
One of the, one of the points that might be helpful to raise here is that, you know, Cornwell and, Cornwell does not have the same clinician and guidance FTEs that other schools of their size have because they can't exist at the same time. Because there's not a place for those types of private professionals to be able to work with students simultaneously. So, so that's an example of, of a consequence programmatically of not having spaces that can accommodate small groups and individual students.
The last programmatic observation here is that the library is undersized. You know, I think that if I'm remembering David correctly, 2X, 2 times a classroom square footage is the general benchmark that's used and closer to 1 classroom's worth of library in the Cornwell School. And it lacks the, the central feel of some of the other buildings. Additionally, as far as the, the building condition goes.
Yep, so we still have asbestos flooring in the building. Some of it's been covered up with the style Flotex carpeting and some of it's been abated and then we have this flooring down. But there's still a substantial amount of asbestos tile remain. And, you know, we are technically compliant as far as egress goes from the classroom, although most class, most classrooms don't have a door to the outside.
And so, the egress in that case is through, I think that quote says you have, you can go through one other room.
Right.
Before you find the egress. And so, there's a lot of, that's the, that's the, could be improved part.
Yes, could be improved, right. You know, plumbing is, it's all original. We have updated plumbing according to, you know, the lead laws for the areas that are approved to drink from. We still have areas that we have signage up that you should not drink from, that are not compliant. And then, the roof, pre-pandemic, we had a roofer look at it and told us it needs a complete replacement, which is also represented on this slide.
The piece of the roof architecture that doesn't really jump out at you from looking at the building is that there's something called cold attic, which I learned as a new term.
Oh, yeah.
So, the roof, the original roof is a flat roof on the building. The sloped roof that's on there now was added after the fact to cover up the deficient flat roof. But now, the sloped roof is also deficient, so there's sort of a too, too bad roof trouble.
Nadia, is there anything that you want to add that relates to the, just the condition as it is right now and what you've experienced relative to programming on, on the positive side or the challenging side?
I guess I always start with the positive. I feel like our staff are being incredibly creative and flexible about where and how we do things in a building that doesn't have the spaces that we need. I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions, but there's a sort of a fundamental, like, there isn't a place for the principal to have a private conversation if there's a meeting happening in the conference room. And there isn't a place, like, the PE class that happens before lunch has to end early because when the kids come through for lunch, it's really disruptive to PE. I mean, it's right, it's just like, and I have a dozen of those stories. We can't have music lessons on the week when there's PE, on a day when there's PE or art. And so, just my ability to do things flexibly in the schedule is really limited. And I'm, we're doing it, you know, we are making it work. But I'm happy to answer any questions. The, the lack of private space to have a conversation, even just a conversation with a, a staff member or a family member or with a student or to give students privacy if they're having a difficult moment is palpable.
Yes, Steve?
And I'm on the facilities committee. And I certainly in these conversations have wanted to be very careful when we talk about buildings to be clear that we're not talking about the people that work within those buildings. And that you can have a conversation, you know, I'll talk with Bruce about cold addicts and those types of things. And I don't think that's a reflection at all of the educators that work in that building. Those are two entirely separate things. I think you can have a really challenging building and have really good work go on. I think oftentimes, there can be conversations about school X, school Y. And I think it's very important to draw some bright lines about the people that do the work in the actual building. And so, yeah, I just would, hopefully you understand that, that as we have those conversations, it's not lost on me that there can be really good work that is done. So, I think at times, it's not surprising that most creative and some of the best work may be done in those challenging spaces because you have to make it work, so.
So, in working with David and the TruX team, we developed what's called the current state concept. It's current state in this, in this instance is no major change in the status quo from the current enrollment pattern of kids in Cornwell going to school in Cornwell. The concept aims to meet the following needs, to secure the front entry and change the administration offices, conference area to, to do so, to renovate the existing space that creates a better connector for accessing different parts of the building without impeding on the programmatic. on the programmatic happenings in the multipurpose room, to create an expanded and more visible library that becomes a little bit more of a hub or a centerpiece of the school. And then in addition of an art and music room, a learning center, and a gym, as well as some bathroom storage and a stage that would kind of provide segmented areas for those instructional areas to have their own, their own space. In doing so, the plan would create a school that could add an additional classroom by repurposing what would be the learning center as a seventh classroom. And that's an additional feature of the current state is that it would provide the ability to have a second section of any grade if the enrollment went past 120 and you needed a seventh classroom. The alternate state was not advanced in a conceptual framework at this point in time because of the magnitude of the current state related to achieving the programmatic needs of the building. And as well as the ongoing conversation around policy and enrollment. So I think one of the things to note as we look at the overhead here, existing and current state, is that we intentionally stopped short of advancing any kind of redesign in order to sort of tie the process off at the point of where we're just solving for current. Here's the floor plan for the existing school. And then the redesign. So in this schematic, you can see, starting in the front here, a new reception and administration area, principal's office, conference room adjacent to the health suite where the nurse would be, that kind of eats into, or that's an existing bathroom, right?
Third grade classroom.
Third grade, that's the third grade?
Yeah, that's the third grade.
Okay. The library does take over some of that third grade classroom, so that's the expansion of the library. And in redoing this entryway, the front entry and airlock leads down to a hallway and sort of a lobby area with sort of common access to the shared areas of the school, the library and the cafeteria, as well as sort of an easy access to the classroom sections without having to walk through any of those common spaces. Over here is the learning center, which would be that seventh flex classroom if necessary. And then the new gym with a stage, storage, and an art and music room. All pretty straightforward. Any questions on the conceptual schematic? Keep us moving.
Does this have enough private meeting spaces? So it adds a private meeting space, the principal's office and the conference room, which are, so currently the principal's office is not private. And then.
There's also a counselor's office here.
Yes, so it is, it is, I'm just looking, it's an addition of, it's essentially an addition of one space for a private conversation, but because there are other spaces where, for example, a student could access virtual SLP services, right? So it'll, it, you don't need so many spaces for a private conversation if you can actually use the space that you have, if that makes sense.
There's a staff room here. So again, like some of those, like individual needs are addressed so that you then have the ability to keep the conference space a conference space and not everything is a multi-function. Using the same square footage costs that we've used for all of our conceptual design work, the square footage is chunked up into new additions, so anything that is in the crosshatch here would be considered a new addition. Square footage that would come under heavy renovation as a part of adding those new spaces is the renovation area. And then updates and repairs is applied to the remainder of the square footage that wouldn't be touched through the renovation or addition line. That leads to a 15, a $15 million cost there on that current state. The new builds, just it was included as a very, very ballpark reference in order to say, if we applied that same cost factor that addressed 10.4 or 10,400 square feet in the current state to the entirety of the square footage, not making the school any bigger than the current state would be. So that's 23, it's 13 now, right? So we'd be adding 10 in the current state and then taking that 23 and doing a redesign of that square footage. That brings you to 25 million. The asterisk here shows that land acquisition or additional square feet beyond that initial 23 is not included in this price point. So this is assuming the use of the same site and the same size. And that's it for Cornwall.
Any questions, Steve?
Yeah, asbestos. You said you're using the same calculation to do these renovations, and I know there's a lot of asbestos in Cornwall. So how is that going to impact? My understanding is that there's a lot and that there's a lot in the floors, and it looks like the renovations that you're doing in some of the floors, you can't touch that without remediating the asbestos.
Yes, asbestos will need to be remediated. I think, you know, these are very, you know, high altitude numbers, so asbestos, you know, is, it's going to add probably $100 a square foot to the areas where you have to deal with.
I had this conversation with David because I was asking him about using a high dollar amount cost per square foot to design a cold storage and covered entryway at one of the other schools. I said, well, surely we must get a discount on the $1,000 a square foot benchmark for something that has no heat, minimal electricity, and no walls, right? And yeah, technically, yes, you know, and you could go into that level of detail on those specific areas of a project. But at this point in the planning process, knowing that you have a 4% cost escalation factor every year, that where this project gets plugged in and some sort of future timeline is still undetermined, that a lot of those aspects of exact costing are a long way out. And so using the high end of an industry standard threshold and applying it evenly, even in cases where there's no walls or it's a cold storage, helps globally to balance out things where there's asbestos tile. So there's a spike here that might be balanced out somewhere else in the, in the district's wholesale universal need, and it all come out in a washing away, right? Rather than looking at every single square foot as a, is this a high cost square foot or a lower cost square foot? There's, that, that will ultimately have to happen.
Steve?
My perspective on the facilities committee is that this is one of, if not our most significantly challenged building. I mean, I think that's just the long and short of it. I don't think that's a reflection on anything except for just that fact. And that's my feeling being on the facilities committee. I don't know if others on the committee would agree with that assessment. Think this is our lowest index score, I can't remember exactly, facilities condition index score. This is our lowest score in the building, as far as I can tell. The, I, the challenges were pretty clear to me in seeing this, how I understood it.
Jess?
I don't know if the facilities committee talked about this, but knowing that kind of one of the, the alternate state is a new build, which would be a different timeline in Cornwall has a higher number of kids in it than some of the other schools, small schools. My understanding is that no other elementary school could absorb 84 kids if there, like say, there was a new build and those kids need to go somewhere else temporarily or something like that. Yeah, I don't know if that, I'm assuming people have thought about it, I don't know if people have talked about it. Just knowing that there's, we're getting into more space limitations and other things.
Mary Heather and then Steve.
We did talk about that a bit in committee and actually discussed, you know, how to present that as well, right? Because we don't want to leave with like, well, let's just build a new building, especially in the context of all the other facilities discussions that we're having. But yeah, it is a question that I think this board does need to think about. In terms of the capital improvement plan for what we have in front of us right now, we're looking at a five-year projection. You know, what are we going to do in the next five years with what we have? That's not to say that this isn't a question that we should be thinking about in the longer term. And one of the things that we discussed during the committee was, you know, what would the state help fund in terms of a new school? And it's probably pretty unlikely that the state will help support building a new school for anything less than like 250 kids. So the idea of building a new school to address this problem also involves a larger conversation about who else will be attending that school? Because we're not going to build a new school for 80 kids or 100 kids, it's going to have to be a much larger amount, which involves a much larger discussion about, you know, how are we determining who will go there and all that? So that's why it started to get to, you know, for, in terms of the capital improvement planning for what we have in front of us in the five years, it seemed like a big rabbit hole to go down at this time. But yes, it's, it's a question. And when you consider the condition and the populations at some of our other facilities, yes, it's something that I think, in my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for the committee, but in my personal opinion, yes, I think it's absolutely a valid question that this community should be played for a number of students conserved by some of our existing older schools that are in rougher shape where continued long-term investment in them gets to be pricier and pricier. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know if that covers what you were.
Yeah, I was going to second a lot of what Mary Heather said, and we definitely had conversation about including this alternate state new build, but we also didn't want to kind of veer from our standard process. All of our schools have had that alternate state, and so we felt it was important to represent something, and this is part of that reality. And then, yeah, I think we're all aware of the challenge of a slide like that in the current context of Ripton, Shoreham, Brickport, and all those conversations and how things like that are perceived. But we thought it was important to stick with the process that we've done for all the other schools.
I think it's really important, you know, as we continue in this process to, for the board to really understand that this is a building that, that has an impact on student programming, you know, in the way that it is. And I actually think that there's a, there's probably an opportunity in this process to have more deliberate conversations with the community of Cornwall around sort of where we are and what that looks like and, you know, and really what they're seeing for their, their kids. And, and, you know, I, there's also a drop in enrollment that's happening there, you know, two years from now, right now, those numbers look like three kindergartners, you know, as opposed to as many. So, you know, it's kind of, there's a lot of moving parts and I think the best way to talk about these is just to, just to start to talk about what we have, you know, and sort of, you know, how, how people come together around where we are and, and what we need to consider moving forward.
Wendy, sorry, this is Ellen. Are you, are you saying that there's a projection for the kindergarten starting in F, or I guess school year 27 of three kids?
Correct.
Based on current preschool enrollment?
Correct.
Okay. How real is that number? Like, how much do we base our decisions based on that first year preschool projection usually?
I, I think that, you know, generally speaking, they're within one or two of, of what, what we project. I think two years ago, we were projecting a Ripton kindergarten next year of five, and it looks like they'll have six if everybody attends. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it actually is fairly, it's not bad, it's not bad. It's a concern, Ellen, and it's one that, you know, we, we've got to keep talking about, you know, as we move forward, so, yep.
Salisbury?
Anything else, Nadia? Anything that's important to represent about Cornwall that hasn't come out already?
No, I don't miss out. It was really nicely summarized.
I do have one additional question, I'm sorry. I remember at the facilities committee meeting, we talked about asking, or circling back with the idea of if this work were to be done, what it would involve in terms of phasing it, how long the timeline, did we ever get an answer on that?
Somewhat, I think when the facility committee meets on, for their retreat on, I think, December, maybe 15th-ish.
I think that's right.
All that information is going to be considered. So in thinking about a five-year plan, like, you know, where, how long do projects take? Where might they begin? All, all those kinds of things. And that way, the facilities committee can begin to do some prioritization, you know, that, that will create a draft that could then come to the board.
Onto Salisbury?
Bring us into Salisbury here.
Jason, do you want to interject?
No, we'll just get into the good stuff.
Okay. Built in 1996, our second newest building. Current building size of 24,550 square feet. Current enrollment, 90 students, including 20 from Ripton. The building capacity is 141. We do have art, music taught on stage. Recent capital improvements, we did the building controls during the pandemic, updated those, and we have, you know, we've done regular maintenance on the buildings that we, as we have with all of them. So it's got a pretty good score.
Which is a nice for a change, right? This timeline is identical to Cornwall. We've been sort of doing these in tandem. And as far as the current state goes, I'm happy to tell you about it. So the general consensus is that the building is very ample, right? There's, there's 90 students in there now. Based on the design, the functions are all able to occur without any kind of impediment or obstruction, and everything's in really good shape, as Bruce was saying. Art and music are both on the stage, which is adjacent to the gym where PE is. There's an easily addressed issue with the accordion partition, which makes. which makes some of the separation of those instructional areas difficult right now. Another matter of discussion was that students are currently eating in their classrooms and might want to move dining into the gym. However, there's a concern about the impact that, you know, rolling tables in and out every day might have on the gym floor and what existing storage space would be even available to store the tables when they weren't being used. So again, a comparatively straightforward slate of concerns here. In the alternate state, we wanted to think about what it would look like to max out the capacity of the building, to bring it all the way up to a seven-classroom, hundred-and-forty-one model and say, well, what happens at that enrollment? What does that, what does that look like? And what would happen to the building and the program and their relationship at that maximum? And so in order to do that, you'd need to turn one of the classrooms into an extra seventh classroom. The existing learning center would be relocated to the existing conference room. And then a conference room would be added adjacent to the principal's office. So this concept creates that sort of cascade of space displacement. The intervention space would be renovated to just kind of cube it up into four sort of office-size areas so that four staff members could all work in the same sort of suite of offices. And then at that max capacity, art and music would need their separate spaces to resolve scheduling conflicts. Essentially, you'd have to go past point-five FTEs of both of those things. And currently, you are at point-five FTEs of both of those things, and they are sharing a space. So somebody would have to find enough of the space to. To preserve the floor and to solve the AMS space issue, this alternate state does propose a small addition for cafeteria and art adjacent to the gym. And I'm going to pass the mic to Tracy here to see if I missed anything. Or you wanted to add anything?
No. But that does it.
Again, so it's pretty straightforward.
Such an easier building.
Here's where we are in both the existing and current, right? Because there's no additions proposed in order to maintain the current state. And then if we were to look at an alternate state, you can see that small cafeteria addition that gets added adjacent to the gym. It's a little easier to appreciate in the floor plan here. So here's the existing. Again, no, no changes other than here in the gym, there's that accordion partition that would be switched out for something a little bit more, more permanent, more wallish. David Epstein has assured me that they come in all different shapes and sizes, and we can find one that really function as more of a classroom wall. Here's that cafeteria slash art, it's a little bit of storage in the back, allowing students to pass through the gym and into this like eating and art area here, right adjacent to the kitchen. So it would kind of keep that activity in the same area as the food being prepared. And then you can see up here, the intervention space chopped into four individual offices for service and service provision staff. Conference room becomes the new learning center. The existing learning center over here becomes the seventh classroom. And I think that that's it for some of those major displacement changes in the event of a max enrollment scenario.
We're going to make it numbers like hundred-and-forty-one.
The one really bugs me. It's got to be something in the square footage, but it's twenty kids a class essentially. But I think that because the class size is smaller at the younger grades and bigger at the older grades, you get this remainder of a one that just hangs out there. I always just forget that it exists and say, a hundred and forty-seven classrooms, a hundred and twenty is six classrooms, and the rest would kind of figure itself out.
Yeah, because Cornwall has like fourteen thousand square feet and Salisbury has twenty-four thousand square feet. And they both came up with a hundred and forty-one maximum capacity, so.
But it would be a different experience in both buildings. And I think that's, you know, that's the kind of thing that is important to remember.
And that's the class-sized compliant capacity, right?
Yes, that's what you can do.
Only classroom space.
Exactly.
Jason? Jason?
I was just going to comment that the alternate state at Cornwall is this. Basically, what we're looking at is a twenty-four thousand square feet and change, so.
Yeah.
Meaning that's the twenty-five million dollar build? That's what you're talking about, Jason?
Yeah, but the fifty million dollar renovation gets you to the same, both the same square footage as Salisbury.
Yep.
Little different.
Nice to see. The one point two would be for that accordion wall and any sort of existing known updates and repairs. Again, there's not a lot to talk about there right now. In the alternate state, we're bringing in that small addition and some of the renovations with a three million dollar price tag on that estimate. That's Salisbury.
Any questions? Perfect questions. Okay. So I discovered that per our next agenda item, we were going to take action on eight twenty-three, but it was not included in our board packet. Unfortunately, our board materials. So I'm going to propose that we put that on our next agenda. Sorry about that. I missed that when I was, there were so many materials in there. I missed that that was missing. Okay. Next up is our second public comment period. And again, we offer public comment as before. So I see that we have a hand online on the Zoom, so Mary Heather, if you could bring.
Hang with me here, Ruth. Okay, Ruth, you should be able to speak now. Do you want to give it a try?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and I, my daughter also is hoping to speak after me, I guess. Anyway, I want to speak to the closing of the most geographically isolated and poorest schools. And in doing so, clearly going against what the communities themselves believe is best for the students. Shoreham, Bridgeport, and Ripton have all suffered primarily by a complete destabilization from the school district that runs them. For the last ten years, it has been death by a thousand cuts as the district administration, both consciously and unconsciously, realized an agenda to close slash merge these schools. These are Title I schools with the most social, emotional, and educational needs, and therefore the most need of stabilization and support, not closing. A school is more than a classroom. The student's life is much more than the time in the classroom. It is an ecosystem within an ecosystem of a town. It is all interrelated, and the health of a part is directly related to the health of the whole. When we talk about what is good for a town, that means the students. The healthier their home life, the more opportunities they will have to thrive. Our schools cannot be successful without trust and buy-in from the community and home. The move to discontinue elementary school in Shoreham, when seventy-three percent of the community survey was against it, clearly moves in the wrong direction. Here's a small example. My children had an hour bus ride each way when they lived in Shoreham, three miles from the school. That is a big part of their day. A bus ride is when the most difficult social behavioral situations arise. And think of the child suspended for riding the bus and the family with no ability to drive them and the resulting increase in missing school. Not having the opportunity of a school in your town is an equity issue, especially in geographically isolated towns like Shoreham. Lastly, I wonder how is the district evaluating major changes made, especially in light of equity? From the implementation of hack days and international baccalaureate to moving sixth grade to mums. Okay, that's the end of what I want to say, and I'm handing it to my daughter, if that's okay?
Sure. State your name, state your name.
Hi.
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 Hello, my name is Nora Bergman, and I'm in seventh grade. And I went to Shoreham Elementary School. I can tell you that when I was in the earlier side of elementary school, I was not the best student. I would be one, I really wanted to stop class, but after going through my years at Shoreham, I became a student who sat quietly and enjoyed doing schoolwork. This switch over my years was mainly due to the stability that I experienced. I've had different teachers and principals, but I walked the same hallways, sat in the same cafeteria, and made connections with some of the teachers. I also made friends that stayed with me for all of my years there. This is what made the switch in my behavior, the stability and comfort of the school. Now I'm in seventh grade, as I mentioned earlier, and I go to North Branch School. My school only has twenty-five students in all and nine in my grade. I've already built connections with my peers and my teachers. The small schools allow me to learn and feel comfortable with all twenty-eight people in my school, including my teachers. The small school isn't limiting me. I feel like I'm learning so much more and having a great experience at the same time. Closing the school and moving all the children to a different school with different surroundings, classmates, and teachers, in my opinion, will outjolt these students' grades averages. The teachers in my elementary school were overwhelmed enough when it was just my small class. So combining these classes is not going to be beneficial for the teachers or the students. I know that if I changed this, I changed schools while in elementary school, I'd still be sent to the principal's office because I didn't have the view outside the front of the school while sitting in a stool or chair to fall back on. With a cool glass on the library window that I leaned on when I read the books. Taking me away from what was happening. I made little things like these that I relied on into focus. Without the stability of my elementary school years, I wouldn't be in North Branch, right? I wouldn't be in North Branch School, right? No, what? Okay, sorry. I wouldn't be in North Branch School, still struggling with my behavior. North Branch has taught me that the size of a school isn't what matters. What matters is the care that is shown. Without somebody, a friend or teacher in a school that a student can rely on, that's where the outbursts happen. The words on the page don't matter, but the meaning behind them does. The pencil holds more power than monkey grass. That's what school is about. The students should be taught by teachers and students surrounding them that care not just about their grade averages, but about their health and their feelings. They should be taught by people who care, not by people who jostle them around.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Yes. Yeah, you're about the same time. I'll let you go first and then Abby.
Hugh McGlocklin, Newbury. I would like the Facilities Committee to look at a size of twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand square feet rather than trying to say that what is at Salisbury is best. And the principal is here, but I think if you had another classroom in twenty-seven thousand square feet, you could do some different things. And that's the only point that I want to make is that if we're talking over a hundred and twenty people, I mean, a hundred and twenty students in a building, I want to look at slightly bigger buildings on that. That's all.
Thank you. Abby?
Oh, I have a couple of questions. Do we have, not quite, I guess I don't have questions. I'm going to state them, my questions, and you guys can go break down them like every one. The special ed teachers, there needs to be a reason that they're not being hired. Not that, they're just not out there. There are. And then also, listening to this conversation about Cornwall and Salisbury as a Shoreham parent is really, really challenging when you just emptied two buildings. Those kids, that building is in worse shape than the one, two that you just closed. And that's really challenging to sit here and know that my building and my community is going to have maybe twenty-five kids, if that. So that's, and the overall costs to do these projects when ACSD has buildings that are now just sitting vacant that you, we are paying for.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shoreham, I know that the head count for incoming is thirteen. And you combine that with, we, Bridgeport is twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that would like to make a public comment? Okay. Next up, we have a potential executive session for approval of a contract side letter. We have to be careful because the Zoom link, we anticipated, we added an extra half hour. But the main Zoom link ends at nine thirty. So what I want to do.
That can be adjusted, right?
I can't. I'm trying, I just, I tried to edit it, and it's not letting me. And maybe it'll let you.
Most time, if everybody gets knocked out, they can get right back in.
Not with a webinar.
It's a different technology.
It says nine thirty to ten thirty right now.
Is the, no, that's for the executive session.
This will be.
No, the executive, I created the executive session. It's fine. We need to come back to.
Oh, to.
The webinar.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Let me see if I can change that.
And I tried to change the webinar.
Can we amend our process to?
Well, no, I think I can, I know how to do it, but I just want to talk about how to do this. As long as we can keep the ACSD webinar active, we'll be able to join it. So I was going to go in and.
If we just stop recording and, and turn the camera on?
But we need people to be able to come in via.
You don't have a core without your online participants.
Our online participants. So what I was going to suggest is on my laptop, I'm going to join the webinar just for the purposes of keeping it alive because it will stay active if somebody's in there as the administrator.
Yeah, if you're a host, a co-host.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was what.
I just wanted to jump in because I think we've done, we tried this before and it didn't work.
Do you have a different suggestion, Jason?
I do not, I'm sorry. I think we just have to keep. Had to have edited the webinar at a time, unfortunately. So I think we can just, we could fire up a new webinar is the only option to adjourn the meeting, basically.
Yeah.
But we can't because it wasn't born.
Drew has his handbook.
I'm sorry, Jason is right. You have to, you'll just have to end it and put a new one up right away.
Even if I keep it active.
So if the webinar is set to end at a hard time, it will end.
No, it's not ending.
Oh, okay, then you're, then if you stay in, you're going to be good.
Yeah.
There is a, yeah, there's a setting that is just like, end at time regardless of whether somebody's in it or not.
Yes, exactly. So I know that. So what I'm going to do, because it hasn't ended, I am going to just hold it, right? So that everyone, now you can, am I cool?
Well, first we have to go through the process of entering.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We'll give it a try.
Yep, we can try.
Hopefully it will work.
Yep.
Thank you, Nadia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia. And actually, I mean, it might just be worth, I mean, Drew, if you don't mind just stepping out, they might be six minutes in here. out, they, they might be six minutes in here.
So I have a slide that just says this meeting, executive session. I'm fine transitioning to that, just leaving for a few minutes and then coming back.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yes.
That would be great.
That would be the simplest thing, probably.
Yes, and then I can guarantee you it would be recorded as one single video.
Yes, thank you. That's perfect.
No sound or audio.
No sound or audio, I promise.
We've done that before.
I promise it will work.
But it wasn't Drew, though.
Yeah, it was not Drew.
We didn't need to make the motions to go into executive session before you, before you.
Before you put that up.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I wanted to talk through this before we prevented it from happening. Okay, so we need two, two motions. We first need a motion that basically says it's essential for us to do this discussion in executive session and then the actual motion to go into an executive session, right? Steve, would you be able to do that for us?
I would love to do that for us. First, I would like to move that, to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the side letter of agreement with the association clearly places the board at a substantial disadvantage because the board risks disclosing its negotiation strategy if it discusses the side letter in public.
Second. Okay. All those, any discussion? All those in favor of the fact that we need to have an executive session, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, now for the actual motion.
I move that we enter an executive session for the purpose of discussing a side letter agreement with the association under Title I, Section 313A1.
And I'm so sorry, I'm focused on this. And any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving into executive session, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so before we get off, I need to send you a link to the executive session.